Superintendent of Virginia Beach City Public Schools, I'm calling this School Board Annual Organizational Meeting to order to serve as pro-chair, uh, chair pro tem in accordance with School Bylaws 118 and 137 until a chair is elected this evening. I'd ask you to please silence all electronic devices. The clerk will now note for the record all school board members who are present for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Present in the Holland Road Annex School Board Room is Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Manning, Ms. Martin, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Thank you. As we prepare this evening for a moment of silence, I'd like to take just a moment to recognize our colleagues in Newport News City Public Schools and the tragedy that occurred there last week. As we, as we join together in a moment of silence, I ask that you keep them in your thoughts and your prayers. Please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. I'm now going to describe the nomination and voting procedure for the Chair and the Vice Chair of the School Board. The following procedure will be used. Any School Board member may nominate a candidate for Chair. A nomination does not require a second. Any School Board member making a nomination may discuss his or her nomination at that time, and other School Board members will also be allowed to discuss that nomination, make another nomination, or make other comments concerning any of the nominations. School Board members are requested to keep comments to under five minutes, and School Board members who have not yet spoken during any round of voting have the right to comment or make a nomination before a School Board member who has already spoken during that round of voting, and will make sure they have the opportunity to speak a subsequent time. After a School Board member has made comments or a nomination, I'll ask if there are any other nominations for Chair, and when no further nominations are made, I'll call for any final discussion of the nominees. If there is no further discussion on nominees, I will close the call for nominations. School Board members will vote for nominees during a round of voting by using colored pieces of paper, which have been provided at your seats. The clerk will announce the names of all nominees for the position of Chair of the School Board for each round. The nominees during that round of voting will choose a colored ball from a container that the clerk has. The color chosen by the nominee for that round of voting will be the color of the paper that School Board members will use to vote for that nominee. The clerk will announce each nominee and the nominees assigned color prior to the voting for that round, and the clerk will then call for the vote for Chair and ask School Board members to hold up the piece of colored paper corresponding to the color for the nominee that the School Board member votes for in that round. The clerk will announce which School Board members voted for which nominee. School Board members who do not wish to vote during a round of voting may do so by not raising a hand or holding up a colored paper. School Board members will not be asked why they did not vote. The nominee who receives the most votes during the round of voting will be declared the Chair, and if there is no nominee who has the most votes, or if there is a tie vote, or if there are no votes, then we will repeat the voting procedures as many times as is necessary. After each round of voting that does not result in a declared Chair, the School Board members may nominate additional nominees. Nominees already nominated remain under consideration unless their nominations are withdrawn by the nominator or the nominee. And when a nominee receives the most votes, I will declare that nominee the Chair, and the duly-elected Chair will then conduct the remainder of business on the agenda from the Chair's seat on the dais. Please note that School Board members will not change seating assignments at tonight's meeting, only the School Board Chair, who will change his or her seat to the Chair's seat on the dais, and new seating assignments for School Board members will begin at the next meeting on January the 24th. Are there any objections, motions, or questions concerning this procedure? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to call for nominations for Chair. Mrs. Weems.
Thank you. After much consideration, discussion, and lots of prayer, I have decided not to run for Chair this year. I thank the majority of the School Board for your support and for all the nice emails, texts, and phone calls that I have received in the last week. It means a lot to me. However, this is simply not my time, and in politics, timing is everything, right? My plate is full. In fact, my plate is overflowing. I started teaching full-time in September in Chesapeake because I can't, of course, teach in Virginia Beach because it would be a conflict of interest. Also, I'm hired by my church to be the youth director. I am president of Caitlin's Halo and spend a great amount of time in our middle and high schools talking about substance abuse disorder and advocating for education in that area. My husband and I run, operate, and manage, and work every day in our 35-year-old family business. And of course, most important, I'm a wife, and I'm raising a precious 11-year-old, and I've got eight grandkids who would love to see Lolly every now and then. So, there's just simply not enough room to put the hours needed for, to be the Chair and to spend the time that I would expect of myself, spend the amount of time that the Board deserves, and also the amount of time that the community expects. That being said, I would like to gladly nominate my colleague, Trenace Riggs, to be our next Chair. Trenace has the experience, she has the time, she has the passion. Trenace and I have met over the break, we have talked many, many times, and we are definitely on the same page. She wants to move this School Board forward in the direction of efficient, civil, and hard-working meetings focused on kids and education. She will work hard to unify this Board. Do Trenace and I always vote the same? Heck, no. But that's okay. We are different, we are entitled to our votes, but in this position, we need to lead fairly, and I have all confidence that she will do so. As you know, she is always approachable, she will listen to all of us, and she will conduct her business in a calm and thoughtful manner. I am confident that she will work with all of us and facilitate our meetings in a way that, once again, we can be proud of sitting here every other Tuesday night. I hope you will join me in voting for Ms. Riggs as our next Chair. Thank you.
Are there other nominations for Chair? Hearing none, I'm going to ask the clerk. Uh, Ms. Tonyado, I think since we only have one, we probably can just assign a color. Is that okay, or do you want to just follow the procedure?
No, she does need to pick a color, and there has to be the vote. Trenace Riggs' color is orange.
Okay, so at this time, if you could please vote for Chair.
We have Jessica Owens voted orange. Ms. Beverly Anderson voted orange. Kimberly Melnick voted orange. Carolyn Weems voted orange. Trenace Riggs voted orange. Jennifer Franklin voted orange. Stacy Martin voted orange. And David Culpepper voted orange.
How many is that? Madam Chair, pursuant to Bylaw 118, the candidate, the nominee with the most amount of votes is declared the Chair, and at this time, Ms. Riggs has the most amount of votes.
Since you've been elected Chair, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for your votes of confidence. I really appreciate it. And thank you, Mrs. Weems. So, the election of the School Board Vice Chair. The second order of business is the election of Vice Chair. The School Board will follow the same election procedure for Vice Chair that it followed for the election of the Chair. Any School Board member may nominate a candidate for Vice Chair and may discuss his or her nomination at that time. I will now call for nominations for Vice Chair. I'm going to take mine first. I want to nominate Carolyn Weems for Vice Chair. As Carolyn mentioned, we met over the Christmas break, the holidays, and talked about Board leadership and what we would like to see take place on the Board as we move forward this new year. We have basically the same goals and want to see the same positive movement forward where the entire Board works together for the good of the students, the employees, and our community. And as she mentioned, we may have not always voted the same, but we do care equally for the school system and the service to our community. We both are honest, approachable, and willing to listen and talk to anyone with their concerns or questions. And so, I feel confident we will work well together and bring the Board along with us into a productive manner. So, I nominate Carolyn Weems for Vice Chair. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Okay, so there are no more nominations, and hear no further discussion. Any discussion? Okay, so the clerk's offering the color.
For Carolyn Weems, her color is green.
So, she has the green, um, she picked the green color, and all that want to vote or will vote for Ms. Weems for Vice Chair, please hold your green cards up.
Mr. Callen voted green. Ms. Brown voted green. Ms. Owens voted green. Ms. Manning voted green. Ms. Anderson voted green. Ms. Melnick voted green. Ms. Riggs voted green. Ms. Weems voted green. Ms. Franklin voted green. Ms. Martin voted green. And Mr. Culpepper voted green. So, we have 11 votes. It's unanimous. Eyes for the Vice Chair being Carolyn Weems.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mrs. Weems. Mrs. Carolyn Weems has been elected our Vice Chair. So now we are at the next part of our appointments. We are going to appoint...
Excuse me, I have something to say.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry, Ms. Weems. She, she would like to say something. Thank you. Thank you, I'm sorry. Um, yes, I appreciate the, for you to indulge me and, and perhaps, you know, forgive me for taking these few minutes, but as the senior member of the School Board, I'm serving my 21st year, I've served with four different superintendents and about 75 different Board members, so I've seen a lot, and boy, have I seen a lot in the last few years. But this is a new year, and I hope that this is a new day for the School Board. We have not always been at our best these last few years, and every single one of us that sat here shares the blame for that or the responsibility. We can do better, we must do better, we will do better. Sometimes we have demonized and criticized each other right here in public on the dais or on social media or through emails. We need to stop that. Let's set a good example for our students and for our community. We have left some of our community feeling unheard, left out, disrespected. We need to stop that. We welcome everyone's voice, especially those with whom we disagree. We have taken sides at times and have definitely politicized. Unfortunately, we have followed the current climate of our country. There seems to be nobody neutral anymore. Everyone and everything is forced to fit into a box or a bucket. Everything has got to be a point of contention. You're with me, or you're against me. That vote means you love teachers, your vote means you don't support teachers. Your vote means you support students and care about their health, your vote means you're trying to harm them. We've got to stop. We can do better. Differences are inevitable. We are 11 different people here. I'm so excited about the new four members who join us. We bring about a lot of diverse perspective, diverse backgrounds, diverse life experiences. Differences are inevitable, and that's good, but division is a choice. I ask my colleagues, let's choose not to be divided. Sure, stick to your, stick to your, um, values, stick to what you're passionate about, state your case, but let's not be divisive. And when there is a way, let's choose to stand in the middle, the messy middle where actually things are done, the messy middle where compromise comes in and decisions are made, the messy middle where problems are solved, the messy middle where there are no battle lines, there are no us versus you, there are no you against me. Because when we stick, when, when we stick to a you versus me battle mentality, there are casualties, and as we know, the casualties are our students, the reason why we're here, the reason why we're, we ran, what we're passionate about. I'm very excited this year. I'm hopeful, Dr. Spence, not wishful, but hopeful, I read your book, that we will close the door to the past and open a new one that brings a bright future, that brings a very, very solid, united School Board with different opinions, but one that's going to be, move forward, one that you can be proud of, and that one is, that's going to serve our students exceptionally well. Thank you, colleagues, and let's do it. Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Weems. Okay, so we're going to move to our next appointment, and that's the appointment of the clerk and deputy clerk. I call for a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the appointment of the clerk and deputy clerk. Do we have a motion? Okay, so moved by Ms. Melnick and seconded by Ms., um, Ms. Franklin. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, we gave it.
You gave the motion.
Melnick, Franklin.
Franklin. Yeah, is there any discussion? I mean, who is it?
All right, ready to vote.
Okay, so we're ready to vote. I call for the vote to approve the appointment of the clerk and deputy clerk. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote. The motion did pass.
Congratulations, Ms. Tonyado.
Thank you, and on behalf of Ms. Kype, the deputy clerk, she thanks you also.
Thank you. So, the schedule of meetings, January 2023 through June 2024. We have that in our packet. Is there any questions or concerns that need to be brought forward? Ms. Manning.
Um, yeah, thank you. I'm trying to pull up the calendar here. Do we have it in our packet? Yeah, here it is.
That's in our packet.
Um, I just wanted to make a suggestion, and I'll throw that out there especially for those have, who have, you know, jobs during the day, and see if this would work better for you. My suggestion would be, uh, the special meeting that was called for the superintendent, where is that? I'm sorry. June 6th. Um, and, and again, I don't know if this is a timeliness matter, Ms. Lanetti, you can address that if it is, but my, my suggestion is if we could have the June 12th meeting earlier and have that meeting on that date earlier rather than having two separate dates. And just a suggestion, I thought that might work better for some folks.
Your limit, only limitation with the superintendent's conduct is that you must complete it by June 30th, so if you need more than one meeting, that would be the only issue, uh, because you need to vote by the, I'm trying to think, what is your last meeting, June 27th?
So, we have June 27th to vote on, so that should work.
Yeah, if there's any reason you would need June, what is it, the 12th meeting as an additional meeting, other than that, as long as you know, you need to complete it by June 27th, that's your completion date.
Or May 23rd, we could do it on the May 23rd instead. Yeah. Okay. May 23rd?
Okay, um, so Ms. Anderson has a question.
So, I, I understand that a special meeting might be an additional meeting, and I understand your feeling about, you know, people who work, and so this is just another additional meeting. However, in the past, the superintendent's evaluation meeting has lasted up to four and a half hours. It has taken a long time. Now, this past June when we did it, I think it was only maybe a two and a half hour meeting, but it is long. Each of us speaks, um, we talk about each of the evaluation, uh, parts of it, um, and I don't think it would be wise to combine that with a regular meeting unless we're just going to ignore the business of the school system on June 12th and June 27th. Was that what you were thinking? I'm not sure, but I, I think we do need a special meeting just for the evaluation, whether it's June 6th or whether it's some other time. I think we need to dedicate a special meeting just for that, for those new Board members who have not been a part of this. There are several pieces to the evaluation, and we each, as a Board member, get a chance to speak to those parts. And like I said, the first year we did it about three, well, it was about three or four years ago when we did it this way, uh, it was like a four and a half hour meeting. I think this past year, we kind of streamlined it a little bit, it was maybe about two and a half hours, but it still was a long meeting, just for the evaluation purposes, and so I, I disagree with, um, eliminating having a special meeting for that. I think that it's very important that we, um, that we devote, this is, that, that is our main job as a School Board, by the way, evaluating our superintendent, um, is one of our main jobs, so I think we need to give it the consideration that it deserves.
Anybody else? Not two? If, I might add, it, it is a long meeting, and if we do, before, you know, our School Board, but usually we have a workshop that starts at 4:00. We'd have to start at least by 1:00 or 2:00, I would say, at least. I mean, that's just going by the shortest one we've had, which was last year, and we streamlined it, and still not sure we'd get through it, but I just wanted to add that part to it.
Certainly within the purview, if I can add, of the Board to, um, suspend the workshop if you wanted to do that and if you start earlier, however you all want to do that, but just to put that out there.
So, you're, so, I guess maybe we'd take a vote on this one to see, what do you think, Ms. Manning?
No, I just thought that it would be easier for a lot of the, our, we have a lot of working Board members now, so, you know, I would, if, if they would like that change, great, if not, you know, whatever.
Do I have any other concerns from other, any of the new Board members or about your schedules? Do you know about them?
I don't want to, I don't want a petition to bend the schedule of my will, but, uh, if that's a, an amenable position to suspend the workshop on, or would that be the 10th? Oh, yeah, your concern?
6th.
Or the 23rd, or May 23rd.
Or the 23rd.
Uh, to do, uh, his evaluation instead, I think that would be beneficial.
Any other?
Are you suggesting, excuse me?
So, you're suggesting to go ahead and go with, um, doing it the first meeting of June, suspend the workshop that day?
I apologize, Kami pointed, just pointed out to me, I was looking at next year, I thought that's what we're talking about, June 4th, but in June, that's the only meeting we have scheduled in June right now, right?
I can't hear you, I can't.
Yeah, well, it's hard to hear you, David.
I saw it, it's in a different block, okay. Yeah, that's, so, so yes, and that's your question, yes.
Okay, so we need someone to make a motion.
I move that we suspend the workshop on June 12th and move the June 6th special meeting to June 12th in place of the workshop.
Do I have a second?
A second.
May I?
Okay, discussion?
Down there, but...
Ms. Anderson?
Are you suggesting that then we would start at 1:00 on that day?
No, my motion is to begin at 4:00 PM at the time of the workshop.
4:00 till 6:00?
Let's do 3:00.
That's still not enough time.
We can always, we can always, um, continue it after the formal meeting if necessary.
Okay, so, um, any other further discussion? Let's take, let's take a vote. Okay, we've got a first and a second. Do you want to speak?
I did, I just, while I understand that, I work also, but what I want to say is, I don't want to minimize the, the superintendent's evaluation and to put a start time, um, of 4:00 on something that has taken us upwards of four-plus hours. I just want to be fair to the superintendent, and I know sometimes it's even harder to get people to stay after the meeting when we've gone on and we don't know what the meeting, what, what will happen during that meeting, and, you know, it might be the back end at 11:00 at night. I'm, I'm just saying, I don't want to minimize the importance of the evaluation, that's all.
Anybody else? Ms. Owens.
Um, so I just wanted to share that I'm not opposed to, uh, suspending or, or not doing the workshop on the June 12th date. We're right there butting up against graduations on June 12th, and administration may welcome the opportunity to do other wrap-up things as well. We start graduations on the 13th, and that's an all-week, all-day thing, um, so I'm certainly not opposed to that for myself as well as anybody else who may benefit from it. I, I do think that we would need to allot, uh, at least three and a half hours to be fair, uh, and so if we, we choose to do it that day, I'd want us to start at a time that allot's at least three and a half hours, since our, our best time was when we didn't even have new Board members, and we may need to take it a little slower, so.
Okay, um, Ms. Manning?
I'll amend my motion to, um, move the superintendent's evaluation to May 23rd and start at 2:00 and suspend the workshop.
Does that need a second? I'll second.
It needs someone, the person who, uh, seconded the original motion would need to agree.
Yeah, I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion, uh, to change the motion for June 27th, did you say the...
May 23rd.
May 23rd.
2:00 PM.
Okay, at 2:00 PM.
And suspend the workshop.
And suspend the workshop, and we have a second for that motion for May 23rd. Any discussion on that?
May I?
Okay, um, Ms. Anderson and Ms. Franklin, Ms. Franklin, let's start with Ms. Franklin, and then Ms. Anderson.
So, I just want to clarify, so if we suspend the workshop on May 23rd, um, and if we don't complete everything on the evaluation, we... evaluation, we will then just carry that over to June 12th? Is that what I'm understanding? No?
That wasn't the motion, but, you know, I assume we could do that if we don't complete it, as Ms. Lanetti suggested.
You could wait till that, the 23rd and decide what you're going to do afterwards. You don't need to make that decision tonight.
Okay. Okay. But that gives us enough time. If we do, if we start on the 23rd, that gives us enough time. If we eliminate the June 6th meeting to make sure that we complete it by the 27th, correct? Yes?
Yes, I believe it's up to you to make sure you get it done in time, but we can always call a special meeting if you don't.
Make sure I'm clear on the timing and everything. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
So I'm agreeable to that, because I think a 2:00 start would give us plenty of time if we suspend the workshop. It would give us a good four hours. We should be able to do the evaluation within that timeframe, but as is pointed out, if we don't get quite finished, we could always reconvene to that part of it after the formal meeting. So I'm agreeable to that.
Okay, so let's take a vote, and the vote is, Mr. Callen. Mr. Callen?
Yes. There's a need for clarity here. We've gone back and forth, and I'm not sure who's on first. So if there could be an opportunity to clarify, if we're moving from June 6th, the reason for moving from June 6th is not clear to me, and if we're moving to a different date in time, are we envisioning committing a large block of time to accommodate superintendent's evaluation? I'm new to the game, as everyone knows, but that strikes me as a pretty important thing to give time for. So I'm not sure of the whys, Vicki. I'm not sure of the whys behind the request, and if I'm going to be asked to make a vote, I want to do so with some degree of understanding what surrounds it, and right now I don't have that.
Madam Chair, would you like me to clarify?
Yes, yes, please.
So my purpose for making this motion is to, so that we don't have an additional meeting, the need for an additional meeting in June. So we can eliminate an additional meeting and still do the business of the superintendent's evaluation on May 23rd and starting earlier at 2:00 p.m. on May 23rd.
I guess I'm still confused as to why there's a need for an additional meeting if we're allocating that for June 6th. That's where my confusion comes.
Well, there wouldn't be an additional meeting if we got rid of that. We would just be adding that to our agenda on May 23rd.
Okay, and therein lies the concern about allocating enough time for that.
Right, we're going to have three and a half hours, plus we can also have additional time after that formal meeting if needed. And as was mentioned, the last superintendent's evaluation took two and a half hours, so hopefully that should be plenty of time.
I do need to, we did not make a decision on the time of the June 6th meeting, did we, Ms. Lanetti?
No, ma'am, we usually wait a little bit longer to just.
Yeah, we wait, you know, we just have it scheduled for that day.
Mrs. Manning, may I suggest, when I wrote down your amended motion, I wrote that you would move the superintendent's evaluation to May 23rd at 2:00 p.m., and you would suspend the workshop that day. I think you also need to add, and you would not have the June 6th special meeting. I'm not sure we said that, but that clarified that you need to remove the June 6th special meeting if you're going to do the superintendent's evaluation on the 23rd.
Thank you.
I think it was implied, but I'm going to make sure, you may need to amend it to make sure that's clear.
Thank you, yes. I'll amend my motion to include that we would eliminate the June 6th meeting.
Can I second that amendment?
Mr. Callen?
No, I didn't have any questions.
Are you, did that settle your question or answer it?
Well, I don't know what we arrived at.
Well, we're still discussing.
We're still discussing, but I mean, did that answer your question about that before we vote? What she, we would suspend the 6th, okay?
Okay.
So we wouldn't have that extra meeting. We would take the 23rd, we would not have a workshop, which usually starts at 4:00.
Okay.
Instead of starting at 4:00 on the workshop, on the 23rd of May, we would start at 2:00.
Okay.
And we would start with the superintendent's evaluation, and that evaluation time would go from 2:00 to probably 5:30, because our regular meeting would start at 6:00.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Manning, did you need to explain some more?
Yeah, I think maybe I'll clarify it further. We already have two June meetings. This was going to be an additional meeting in, just for that line item, in case you were thinking we were going to have a full meeting on June 6th. We would no longer, it was just for the superintendent's evaluation. So it's not like we're eliminating a formal meeting that we normally have. We're still going to have two June meetings.
Okay, Ms. Melnick?
And not to belabor this, but a meeting for the superintendent's evaluation that could start at 6:00 at night after work hours is now going to require a 2:00 start time on the 23rd, where working people will then have to take nearly a full day off from work. So just a suggestion that we leave it on June 6th, we meet at 6:00, we do the business of the superintendent's evaluation, and we're able to continue with our workshop load, which it doesn't just go away. We have to add that on to another meeting. We're going to have to weasel all that back in, and which might require an earlier start time, might require a 3:00 start time to try to get that stuff back into the next meeting, or would require staying past the date, I mean, past the time, a normal completion time of the school board meeting. Just a suggestion.
Anybody else before we take a vote? Okay, we're going to vote on Mrs. Manning's second suggestion and motion, which is to drop the June 6th meeting for the evaluation of the superintendent and have the evaluation of the superintendent on the May 23rd date at 2:00. We will not have a workshop that day, so as we can have the amount of time we would need, and then we would start our meeting, our regular meeting at 6:00. We would probably at least need to be finished by 5:30 with the evaluation. Okay? So do I have any more questions or concerns? Ms. Anderson?
So I don't have a problem with it, with the 2:00 start time, but I could see that if someone had a job where they normally work until 4:00 or 5:00, they may have problems starting at 2:00 on the 23rd. I'm back to, I would prefer keeping the time, keeping the evaluation on June 6th, starting at either 5:00 or 6:00 as, you know, as a meeting. It's far enough in advance between now and June 6th that if you have problems with having a special meeting on June 6th, you probably have time between now and June 6th to work out that schedule. It doesn't bother me because I don't have another job right now. I'm retired, as a retired teacher. So, you know, I have the time on both days, but I do believe that a 2:00 start time would give us three and a half hours. It might be enough time depending on, you know, how much people talk and on each of the categories, but I think I'm leaning now toward voting to keep June 6th as a special meeting day.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let's take the vote. I did restate Mrs. Manning's second motion clearly. All in favor of Mrs. Manning's second motion to move the superintendent's evaluation to the 23rd at 2:00, please raise your hand. Okay, I have, Ms.
We have three ayes.
Okay. All that are against it and to keep the same schedule that we have in front of us and have it on June the 6th as scheduled, please raise your hand.
We have eight ayes to keep the schedule as is.
Okay, so.
So eight nays.
Point of order, that wouldn't, it's on my substitute motion, we would now go back to the original motion.
There's eight nays on Ms. Manning's second amended substitute motion. Her motion did not pass. So now, back on the floor, we need to get a motion and a second for the original schedule as presented.
Okay.
I move that we keep the schedule as presented.
And do I have a second? Okay, so the motion was moved by Mrs. Melnick and seconded by Mrs. Williams to keep it as scheduled on our schedule sheet in front of us. All in favor, say, raise your hand.
We have nine ayes.
Okay, all against, raise your hand.
And we have two nays, the motion did pass, nine to two.
Okay, so we will be meeting for Dr. Spence's superintendent's evaluation on June 6th, and a time will be announced at a later date. Okay. Our next item on our agenda is student, employee, and public awards and recognition. We have none for this meeting, so now we need to go to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda as presented?
Ms. Riggs, I need to note for you that there was an addition on Consent 15B. There was a scrivener change on the deed. We had to change a number on that. That was added to your package, so that needs to be added. And we also note that you do not, at this time, need a closed session after the meeting. You do have, we've updated the agenda materials, but 15B has a scrivener's change, and that is the easement involving Landstown Middle School, and that it should be at your desk.
So it's D?
B.
15B, okay.
15B, it's consented down to item, Landstown Middle School. There's just a scrivener's change, we had to correct a number to it.
Okay. Any other, Mrs. Manning?
Yeah, I would like to request to move item 15A, positive behavioral interventions under consent agenda, move that off, the consent to action, item C.
Okay.
I second.
So 15A, positive behavior intervention and supports PBIS, year two, tier one evaluation, move it from consent to action?
Correct, action.
C. Okay. So the motion was made by Mrs. Manning and seconded by Mr. Culpepper. Any other changes? Okay. So do I have a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Are you second, are you moving on Mrs. Manning's additions, or are you simply adopt?
As amended, with Mrs. Manning's addition and the scrivener changes. Mrs. Anderson, do I have a second? Mrs. Franklin? All in favor, raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote. The motion did pass for the amended agenda.
Okay, thank you. So the superintendent's report will be on the second monthly meeting, so we don't have one tonight. The approval of December 13th, 2022, regular school board meeting minutes. Are there any changes or any things that need to be discussed before we approve it? Okay, so moved by Mrs. Anderson, do I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Franklin. All in favor of the approval of the December 13th, 2022 meeting minutes, raise your hand.
We have eight ayes.
Okay, all that, I guess abstained? Please raise your hand. And the abstention is because you were not present? Okay.
So Madam Chair, the motion passed with eight ayes and three abstentions.
Mrs. Martin, did you vote for that one?
I did, I was here attending the meeting in the audience. I wasn't sure.
Okay, so what?
She can actually vote, she doesn't have.
She can, okay, all right. So we're going to take that as a vote, yes, all right. Okay, so we are now on item 12. Public comments will start now and last until 8:00 p.m. The school board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K12, public education through 12, public education in Virginia Beach, and the business of the school board and the school division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the school board clerk prior to noon today. Speakers are responsible for being in chambers or online when they are called to speak. If a speaker is not present when called to speak, or is not online or unable to unmute when called to speak, the school board at its sole discretion may allow the speaker to speak at the end of the public comment session. The school board also invites the public to submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. Madam Clerk, please introduce the first speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will begin with our student speakers. We have Emily Labarre, Charlene Levine, and then Andrea Palamino Jio.
Good afternoon, my name is Emily Labarre, and I'm the president of First Colonial High Schools Gender Sexuality Alliance.
Welcome.
I, along with many others, are here to speak against the 2022 model policies as we have since September. These policies would allow students to be taken out of school counseling, which would prevent any student from receiving mental health services or from reporting abuse. It requires deadnaming and misgendering of transgender students, a clear message to all those transgender students. You aren't welcome here. You aren't equal to your peers. You don't deserve to be protected. This is a dangerous message to send. We can blind ourselves to the threat that these policies pose, but that doesn't make the threat go away. We can insist that the threat does not exist, but that does not make it true. Outing transgender students to their parents has the potential for devastating consequences, especially amid a mental health epidemic. My experiences with parents who love and support me does not erase the experiences of my friend who cries to me in a public library because his mom threw a glass at him. It does not erase the potential and the reality of homelessness that many trans youth face. The love that's in my parents' hearts and the love I know is in your hearts does not erase the hatred that some people have in theirs. Your role as our school board is to protect our students, all of our students. This includes protecting them from these policies. We've been here since September. You, as well as many of my peers, may be wondering, when will you stop? When do you just quit? My answer to you will be the same as my answer to them. We can stop when you do the right thing. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Charlene Levine, then Andrea Palamino Jio, and then Carolyn Ramsey.
Welcome.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'm here with my friends to oppose the 2022 model guidelines regarding the treatment of transgender students. I don't intend to persuade you with statistics or policy analysis. Rather, the argument I present is simple. Please, listen to the students. We are the ones who sit in the classrooms every day. We are the ones affected by the policies that you, the board members, implement. We are the ones who eat lunch with transgender and non-binary students every day and listen to their struggles and how they are feeling. So it isn't an accident that many students are coming to this board to speak out against these policies. these policies. Others might have their own insights on these issues, but only students understand what it's like to sit down in class next to our transgender and non-binary classmates. These students are who we work with on lab days in chemistry, they are who we review essays with in English, and for many of us, they are the people we call our best friends. We know how much it means to our peers when they are called by the names that represent their best, true, and authentic selves. We see their faces wince every time they are deadnamed. We are the ones that will see the effects of these policies every day, so we deserve to have our voices respected and heard when we say that teachers should not be forced to disrespect their own students. To directly quote a transgender student in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, "The difference between a good teacher and a great teacher is respect. A respectful teacher can make or break a class. Knowing that teachers will respect your name is something so small, yet so affirming in the long run. It makes me feel so much better that my teachers will respect the name I go by, especially when I am faced with transphobia from fellow students." Now, some may think that because we are young and not of voting age, our voices are unimportant and not worthy of being heard. To them, I would say, we are the ones who live in the realities created by hateful policies like the twenty twenty-two model guidelines. We are the ones who see our transgender classmates every school day. We know what's going on in our schools, and that is why we are here. From my understanding, the goal of this board is to provide students with the best education possible and form educated citizens who are equipped to better their communities. Well, here we are. We are the products of this school system, seeing a problem of incredible significance and trying our best to protect our friends and our community, just as we were taught to. It would be a grave mistake to ignore the very students that you helped develop into passionate, well-educated advocates. So please, here-
Thirty seconds.
Please, hear and consider our request not to implement these policies. Thank you for your time, and have a good night.
I would like to remind our audience, please refrain from clapping. I know you're excited and you want to support your friends, but let's please refrain from clapping. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrea Palamino J.O., then Carolyn Ramsey, then Vikram Kali.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Andrea Palamino Ohio, and I'm a senior at First Colonial High School in the Legal Studies Academy. We've given the stories and the arguments that oppose the twenty twenty-two model guidelines multiple times now, but today, I would like to provide to you some truths. According to the Education Week in twenty twenty, more than one in three educators reported that they believed LGBTQ students felt somewhat too extremely uncomfortable in their school buildings. More than seventy-seven percent of transgender students and more than sixty-nine percent of non-binary students reported facing discrimination at school versus the forty-six percent of their cisgender peers. According to the Trevor Project, sixty-one percent of trans and non-binary middle and high school students reported being bullied within a school year. Trevor Project data shows that transgender and non-binary youth had the highest rates of suicidal ideation at fifty-two percent, and of experiencing symptoms of generalized anxiety disorder at seventy-seven percent in comparison to their LGBTQ peers. According to the University of Texas, transgender youths report having suicidal thoughts at nearly twice the rate of their peers, with about one out of every three transgender youths reporting considering suicide at some time in their lives. The Movement Advancement Project found that only twenty-seven percent of transgender students say their parents are very supportive, and forty-three percent of transgender students say that they have an adult in their families they could turn to in their times of need. Oftentimes, the only person these students have to turn to is a teacher or a counselor at their school. While these facts only show one side of the picture, these facts also support that if we provide positively to trans youth, we can improve their well-being and academic outcomes substantially. According to GLSEN, an organization founded to support LGBTQ youth, transgender students with more supportive staff members statistically have greater educational aspirations and higher GPAs. Additionally, Education Week states that while more than fifty-three percent of transgender students with supportive school staff reported feeling that they belonged in school, that was the case for only eighteen percent of those without staff support. These policies and their diminishment of trans students' rights will only increase these statistics. According to the Trevor Project, every forty-five seconds-
Thirty seconds.
-an LGBTQ, uh, youth attempts suicide. And if we allow these model policies to be put into place by the Virginia Department of Education, that clock will start ticking much faster. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carol Anne Ramsey, then Vikram Kali, then Calix Kimball.
Good evening, my name is Carolyn Ramsey, I'm a senior from First Colonial High School, and I'm in the Legal Studies Academy.
Welcome.
The fear of the unknown is terrifying. Not knowing whether or not you'll be accepted when you walk into a room is a fear that no one should know, yet it's the reality for many transgender students today. The Trevor Project states that LGBTQ plus youth are more than four times as likely than their peers to commit suicide. Now, this increased risk is not due to their sexual or gender identity, but they are rather placed at a higher risk because of how they are mistreated and stigmatized in society. Last week, when I was reaching out to students to come here today and share their stories, this is a response that I received from a transgender student. "I could never in a million years. I'd get kicked out of the house. My mom is just blatantly transphobic. It's unfathomable how transphobic she is." Responses such as these are unfortunately the norm due to the fact that students are not comfortable with the public outcry that surrounds their own gender identity, and that extends to their own homes. While the model policy requiring a parent's signature for a name change may not seem like a big deal, it could quite literally be the difference between students having a home and being homeless. This is not to say that all parents are not supportive, but what do we do for the ones who are not as fortunate? Do we send students into a dangerous situation, or do we help students find and be their best selves? One of the scariest situations that a person in the LGBTQ plus community faces is coming out. Even for students in the most welcoming environments, coming out is a big deal. No policy should ever prohibit a student's process in coming out, and this policy rushes that process. Earlier this year, when the largest walkout against these model policies at Princess Anne High School, a student was handing out pride flags. When a transgender pride flag was being handed out, another student took the flag, threw it on the ground, and stomped on it. Similarly, at a walkout at F.C., flags were being snatched and ripped up right in front of the very students that that walkout was supposed to fight for. Discrimination against transgender students is ever-present even at the rallies created to protect these individuals. Behavior such as these are not only normalized but enabled by these model policies. Hate for transgender students is very much alive in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and we need to, and we need to do more to protect our students. And that requires a rejection of these model policies by the board. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vikram Kali, then Calix Kimball, then Geneva Weren.
Good evening. My name is Vikram Kali, and I'm the senior class president at Princess Anne High School.
Throughout my entire life, I've grasped the importance of my name.
Growing up South Asian, naming is an integral part of my culture. Within the first months of my birth, I had an entire ceremony dedicated to it. A priest from Northern Virginia driving all the way to my home here in Virginia Beach to designate what I would be called for the rest of my life. I remember vividly instances in which I was meant to be passive to mispronunciations of my name. I would ask teacher, I would have teachers ask me if they could call me V. or Vik. As my ethnic name was too difficult to pronounce. It is looking back that I realize the microaggression that I faced from such a young age, and something that hurt me and almost made me ashamed of what I was called. Choosing to mispronounce, readjust, or alter my name was not only basic disrespect, but an act of ignorance towards my character, my heritage, and the entirety of my cultural identity. Calling someone by their name is the most basic form of respect. Though a name might seem like just a word, a label that we're given at birth and that we carry with us throughout our lives, it is so much more than that. It is an integral part of our identity, a way that we are known and recognized by the world around us. They connect us to our families, to our communities, and to our cultural heritage. They are a way for us to connect with past and to honor traditions and the legacies of those who have come before us. However, the labels we are given at birth are sometimes the labels we wish to forget, reminding us of a past in which trauma, hardship, and a completely different person stem from. The model policies illustrate the possibility of such disrespect, outright deadnaming students, and stripping them of the most basic respect they deserve. For many transgender and non-binary individuals, their chosen name is a crucial aspect of their identity. It represents who they are and how they want to be seen and recognized by the world. Thus, when someone deadnames them, it sends the message that their identity is not valid or worthy of respect, something all students should be given within a school system, a place meant to be a safe space and not a space of confinement. We all have the right to be who we are and to be recognized and respected for our true selves, and deadnaming someone goes against this fundamental principle and is simply wrong. As I speak here before you all, I hope it is known that in moments like this where the board sits in front of a wave of dissent, they know that in the near future, they will be faced with a choice, something familiar to all of you. You face the choice of choosing whether or not to run for the position you currently hold. Many of you face the choice of campaigning on the principle of, quote, "putting students first." And soon, you will face the choice of passing a set of policies that will not only go against all that you have campaigned on-
Thirty seconds.
...but will also completely destroy the credibility and respect that so many board members before you have worked to build, making choices to improve the lives of students of generations past. I stand in front of you not to talk about just my name and why it is important to me, but to remind you that people are urging you to not only make a choice, but to make the right one. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Calix Kimball, then Geneva Warren, then Chloe Croft.
Welcome.
My name is Calix Kimball, I'm a student at, uh, First Colonial High School. The new model policies are a shameless, transparent attempt to strip transgender students of their afforded rights, of which they already had little, including the use of nicknames and preferred pronouns which are being taken away. And what are these prejudices for, other than sport? Targeting these kids isn't productive, and it isn't serving a greater good. This isn't an educational reform, nor does it benefit anybody besides the beholders of prejudice. The students who would be especially hurt by the refusal to respect their preferences without a parental notification are not having their possibly tumultuous home lives considered. Safety for transgender students around their parents cannot be guaranteed, and yet the movement to ignore this fact is progressing alarmingly fast. To put it simply, not only is it ill-intent towards a marginalized group of people, but also fruitless in its efforts to do anything but put these kids at a disadvantage. As my peers, as one with these kids who will be this country's future, I believe it is in our collective best interest to give them the tools that they need to be pioneers of the future, rather than taking them away. These model policies are a reminder to transgender students that so many people in power foster hatred for them. I aim to protect the security of my peers, whatever form they may take, but it seems so many people with the opportunity to make their equity a reality refuse to do so. I am a subscriber to the belief of "whatever floats your boat," but that doesn't include sinking, sinking other peoples, especially when there is nothing but contempt for a people behind it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Geneva Warren, Chloe Croft, then Icarus Landacker.
Welcome.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Geneva Weren, and I am a sophomore in the Legal Studies Academy. Through the ongoing debate about trans rights and the model policies, many questions have been asked and answered, except the one that I, and hopefully many others, would deem the most important. Why does a child's identity matter so much for it to be a debated question on a governmental level? Shouldn't the happiness and comfort of the students be the number one priority instead of why they choose to go by something so small and as different pronouns than what their birth sex is? These questions may sound like the oversimplification of this debate, but they are the questions that need to be asked to bring this issue down from an opinionated argument to a rational debate and truly think through the actions that will affect thousands of children in Virginia. A major theme of recent elections has been putting the students first. Well, we, the students, are asking you to put us first and to stay true to the promises you made to us from the day we set foot in any Virginia Beach school. These promises include putting our happiness and comfort first. The model policies proposed would put hundreds' happiness in jeopardy by stripping those of access to comfort in school resources and finding comfort in their own skin. Any reasonable parent and any reasonable adult would understand these facts and hold their child's happiness and self-esteem over any inner preference that they may have. A parent that's truly in tune with their child does not need the government to act as an informant for them. Instead, they would find it much more beneficial for all parties if their child were to be the one to share their personal information on their own terms in their own time. In more legal terms, the Declaration of Independence states that every human has the rights to life, liberty, and the pursuits of happiness. In the case of Tinker versus Des Moines, the precedent "children do not lose their rights at the schoolhouse gate" is set by the Supreme Court. These bedrocks of our legal system are just two examples of why these model policies are a violations, are a violation of a student's human rights. A trans child deserves the same rights as any other student and as any other person in Virginia schools, period. For years, we've been taught to respect others' beliefs and choices for someone who is a per, and for someone who is, others' beliefs and choices for who someone is as a person, and these model policies will do the exact opposite. If these values are held everywhere else in our country, who is anyone to try and rob a child of their personal-
Thirty seconds.
...and what other reason would these values not apply except for one based on prejudice and injustice? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chloe Croft, then Icarus Landacker, then Madison Ostraya.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Chloe Croft, um, I'm a student at Ocean Lakes. I'm here today because the Virginia DOE wants written forms from parents, guardians, or emancipated students to confirm transgender students that want to be addressed by their preferred name and/or pronouns. I'm not transgender myself, yet it is important for me to talk about this issue so that voices are heard. I'm concerned that this will increase a transgender's, sorry, a trans student's bad home environment and will cause discomfort to them in school. For one, many transgender students don't have a safe haven at home, meaning some guardians do not support their choices, which could lead to harassment and emotional, possibly physical abuse. It's cruel to the students that don't already have support from anyone outside of home. It's only logical that bad home environments can lead to bad school performances, and a bad school performance will lead to failing in school. And a sensitive topic, this could also prevent suicide. The Trevor Project's twenty twenty-two survey showed that forty-five percent of LGBTQ youth considered attempting suicide. However, this rate was cut in half for students who had high social support from their family. The same survey showed that students who had an LGBTQ-affirming school reported lower rates of attempting suicide. This information proves that the policy will be harmful to transgender students who need positivity and support. There should be no issue at all to simply say a different name slash pronoun than what was legally given to them. Nobody should feel like they're pushed away from their true identity. We're taught that school is the most sacred place for us kids, but this policy will break peace. Transgender students will possibly be subject to discrimination and harassment. Schools will break protection of privacy and confidentiality of sensitive information by making someone sign a form to conform, to confirm their approval, someone who is not obligated to tell transgender students who they want to be. We understand that the Department of Education had good intentions by involving parents in students' lives, but with a situation like this, students' confidentiality should be kept hidden in case of unaccepting parents. Being transgender is not an option. At the end of the day, kids should be able to have at least one safe refuge where they can feel comfortable and safe. This is the viewpoint of a transgender peer to provide an inside perspective of what it's like to be a transgender in school. I think the school is reasonable to when it comes to-
Thirty seconds.
...wanting to change their name. But one of the issues that I have is that not every trans student can use their preferred locker room. Asking permission for that is like asking what you can be, and there's no criteria to what you have to fit into. Is, is Azamine for cis people to give trans cis, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And that is time?
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Icarus Landacker, then Madison Ostraya, then Alana Spencer.
Welcome.
My name is Icarus Landacker, and I am a non-binary IB student at Princess Anne High School. Some of you may recognize me from the past several times I have been here with my peers, but to those of you who are new, thank you for your time and for allowing us to speak. School was the first place I got to go by Icarus. The IB Academy has been my home for the past- The IB Academy has been my home for the past four years and has not only given me an exceptional education, but has also given me the chance to be myself. To remove that would be to scatter my life in a million different directions, not all of them being good. Using my name and pronouns at school is not a way for me to separate myself from my parents. It is a way for me to form an identity that I feel comfortable in. I know my parents love me, my siblings too, but that does not always mean they accept me as me. To them, I am not Icarus, so I have to wear a mask labeled with my dead name. We talk about mental health and the dangers of wearing masks, so why are we promoting those exact dangers through this policy? Outing students to parents does not take away their masks. Refusing to use their preferred name and pronouns won't make them any less trans. It merely forces trans students to put on a second mask, one for their family and another for their classmates and teachers. I cannot put into words how vital being accepted at school is for me, but I would like to share an example. If I have a substitute in class, I am referred to by my birth name. If I am too tired or having a bad day, I don't say anything. It will typically only be called during roll anyways, so I can manage that one blow, some days anyways. Other times, I will politely tell the substitute that I go by Icarus, and we move on. The entire interaction only takes about five seconds. That is five seconds of the class's time compared to an agonizing hour and 50 minutes that could have been full of dysphoria for me. Those five seconds will not cost another student a passing grade in the class, but that hour and 50 minutes can cost me so much more than my grades. To close off, I'd like to leave you with the mission statement of the IB program, which is to develop inquiring, knowledgeable, and caring young people who help to create a better and more peaceful world through intercultural understanding and respect. Inquiring is not masking one's identity behind a policy. Caring is not a teacher required to out students to their parents.
Thirty seconds.
And respect is certainly not stripping away a person's identity starting with their name and pronouns. I ask this board, do you really want inquisitiveness, care, and respect to be erased in our schools through this policy? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Madison Austria, then Alana Spencer, then Natalie Gonzalez.
Welcome.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak before you today. My name is Madison Taylor Austria, and I am a freshman attending First Colonial's Legal Studies Academy. With the coming 2022 policies regarding the treatment of student gender identity, I'd like the focal point of my speech to be concerning the student-teacher relation and the unhealthy, non-conducive learning environment it entails. The 2022 model policies under Section 2 guiding principles, "School shall respect all students," it says, and I quote, "all children in Virginia have the right to learn, free from unlawful discrimination and harassment." Contrary to that, the 2022 policies eventuate transphobia and bigotry. It'll invite more discrimination as well as enable those who already exhibit discriminatory, hurtful, and bullying behaviors. It creates breeding grounds for microaggressions to be heightened. Not only that, but if they have felt safe enough to resent themselves a different way while in school, teachers will have to tell their parents, making it unsafe both at school and at home, continuing the amount of gross negligence or inviting it. In addition, the enforcement of going by a birth-given name and by biological pronouns constitutes dysmorphia initiated by peers and even teachers, who will now have to refer to their students by their legal name and sex out of fear of being fired. A school's job is to curate a safe learning environment for all students, and a teacher's job is not only to teach, but to create a secure, beneficial learning environment. But how can that be done when these policies create strain and animosity between students and their instructors? As a teacher, you care for the well-being of students, and if teachers are now supposed to ignore their students' feelings and even potentially go against their own morals so that they aren't risking their job but giving back the mutual respect students give to them. Across the country, the teacher position is already understaffed, and this enables more tools for people to attack teachers. This could complete those numbers even further, and we need good teachers who care and are attentive, but we won't get that. Is this the, quote, "opportunity to receive high-quality educations" the policies outlined in the process? How do these policies protect non-gender conforming students, or any student? How can you justify the amount of torment these students will go through? You cannot say the department supports efforts to protect and encourage respect for all students when this is not even half of the outcome. School is supposed to be a stepping stone for children and young adults to help guide them into figuring out who they are and who they want to be in life and in their future, but they are going to be constantly denied who they are. They will have to face the constant social rejection and consequences of denial. We need to protect students' right to learn and a right to further themselves over a parent's right to dictate and judge. A child's freedom takes priority. Now, these policies won't affect me, not even in the slightest, but I see, I hear, I acknowledge the people around me, and I know this isn't right, and this isn't fair, and I need to do my part, so I'm asking you to please do yours. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alana Spencer, then Natalie Gonzalez, then Dominic Hughes.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, board members. I'm Alana Spencer, and I am here again to speak against the 2020 model transgender policies. I have a simple statement for you, a simple fact but a harsh reality. Trans people are treated differently, differently than our cisgender peers. They are treated differently whether it's in the workplace, or a store, or walking down the street, or at school. Multiple studies by Glisten have shown 90% of transgender students have heard derogatory remarks in school or negative remarks about someone's gender expression. 39% of transgender students have heard school staff make homophobic remarks. 89% of trans students have been verbally harassed because of their gender expression, and 55% of trans students have been physically harassed, and because of this, trans people are more prone to depression, anxiety, and overall harder school life. You've seen it in the news, you've seen it in your emails, and various speeches you've heard in previous school board meetings and speeches you will hear today. And I foretoe ask any student in this room, I guarantee you that we can all name incident, if not multiple, where we've seen a trans student be discriminated against. And I'm afraid the more I throw out numbers, the more I throw out statistics, the more transgender people will be considered just numbers. But we are your students. We are VPCPS students, sitting right in front of you, speaking to you. You told us that you would break any barriers that would prevent us from support in an effective and inclusive learning environment, regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, or gender identity. Why should it be any different now? We are students. You want to provide the resources we need to become balanced, resilient learners who are personally and socially responsible, so we become prepared future adults. But it is impossible to thrive and succeed to one's fullest potential if the environment around them is made to disconnect them from everybody. To put it directly, trans could would be maliciously misgendered, deadnamed, harassed, and erased if the 2022 model policies were to be implemented in our schools. It would guarantee harm to your transgender students educationally, physically, and emotionally. We are different. Everybody in this room is different. Our relationships are different, our homes are different, our opinions are different. Although we have many differences, there is more that brings us together than pulls us apart. We all deserve a few things, to be treated fairly, to feel safe and to belong, and by implementing the 2022 model policies, you'll be continuing to alienate and separate us. But you still hold the choice, and will continue to hold the choice, to bring us all together, to ensure that schools are safe and inclusive environments for all you, by denying these policies. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Natalie Gonzalez, then Dominic Hughes, then Charlie Bodenstein.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Natalie Gonzalez, and so far, we've spent the past few months arguing against the 2022 model policies, and in those months, we've established the importance of respecting a trans student's identity in the classroom. Many defenders of the policy state that they are intended to protect parents' rights. While it is reasonable for a parent to not want something as important as their child's gender identity hidden from them, this desire is ultimately misguided. All parents wish they could know everything that pertains to their children, but it must be understood that intimacy cannot be forced and instead must be cultivated. The model policies are flawed because, in their attempt to protect parents' rights, they disrespect the private nature of parent-child relationships. When a child comes out to their parents as trans, it gives parents a chance to show their child that they support them, and it gives children a chance to show their parents that, despite their fears and uncertainty, they trust them and want to open up to them. Supportive parents don't need teachers to force their children to come out to them. Supportive parents want to instill confidence and security in their children and trust that they will come to them on their own terms. I am not trans, but I know how scary coming out can be, even if your parents are accepting. As a bisexual woman, I came out to my friends and my brothers before I came out to my parents. I knew my parents would love me no matter what, but that didn't make me any less scared of how they would react. My parents found out I was bisexual before I was ready for them to, and something my mom said stuck with me. Though she would always love me regardless of my sexuality, her only regret was that I hadn't told her myself. Knowing that I trusted her enough to come out was more important to her than knowing I was bisexual. There are countless reasons why trans students may come out to their classmates and teachers before their parents, and that includes the fear of abuse and abandonment. Some students might hesitate because they want to be sure of their identity before coming out. Whatever their reason, a teacher who doesn't know a student's circumstances shouldn't get to decide when and how they come out, and a teacher who does wouldn't want to out them to begin with. Teachers are, of course, expected to communicate with parents regarding things that concern their children, but a student being trans isn't the same as a student having medical concerns or getting in trouble. A student's gender identity is not on the same level as their GPA or their class schedule. It is a part of who they are, and it is something that a parent should find out, not from a teacher, but from their child themselves. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dominic Hughes, then Charlie Bodenstein, then Jade Ortiz.
Welcome.
Hello, school board. My name is Dominic Hughes, and I am a student at First Colonial High School. I am here today to voice my opposition to the forced deadnaming and misgendering of transgender students as prescribed by the 2022 model policies. Let it be known that this is not an issue of politics. The right of transgender students to form relationships with their teachers should never be a political issue, and the human rights of any student should never be a political issue. Unfortunately, this issue has become a political third rail. Earlier tonight, our new vice chair, Ms. Weems, mentioned that this school board has become too politicized. That is the opposite, not the point of the school board. The school board acts like it's divided by this invisible line that no one dares cross. The board is supposed to have one and only one agenda: serve the students. 40% of trans youth have attempted suicide, but we can reduce social behavior by 56% if we simply use a child's preferred name. By respecting a student's name, teachers and other educators have an opportunity to cut trans students' suicide risk in half. These policies refuse them that chance. That is clearly not a policy serving the students. Listen to the students who speak tonight and have already spoken. What unites these students isn't a political party or any campaign slogan. What unites us is a desire to try and make the school the best place it can be for our peers. These are not your traditional liberal activists. These are average students from varying backgrounds and lay on various areas of the political spectrum. I myself am even a conservative, deferring from my parents who raised me, but that doesn't mean I have to be heartless to the struggles of my friends and peers who have been speaking out. We all have an obligation to help each other, and that's what I'm doing tonight, in spite of my political norms. As I understand, my peers have now attended and spoken at seven consecutive meetings, and that is nothing to be taken lightly. Anyone who has spent this amount of time researching the issues, talking to students, and talking to this board should be listened to and heard. Young voices, especially those willing to fight so passionately, must be strongly considered if this board is truly focused on their goal of serving the students of this district. I'm asking this board not just to listen, but to hear those who spend seven hours a day for five days a week in these schools as they voice why these model policies would be so dangerous to our classmates. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Charlie Bodenstein, then Jade Ortiz, then Naomi Jiamandu.
Good evening, board members.
Welcome.
Hi, Dr. Culpepper, Mr. Culpepper. I am Charlie Bodenstein, a senior at First Colonial High School. This is a testimony from a sophomore at First Colonial High School who will be directly affected by the Virginia Department of Education model policies. In high school, we begin to truly start thinking about our futures, possible jobs, colleges, and other potential paths. We begin to figure out who we are, what path we want to take, and yet, we're denied something as simple as being referred to by our chosen name. We are expected to start becoming more independent, however, we are being forced to stay tied to a name we no longer feel comfortable being called. I am a student who, if these laws are passed, won't be able to be called by so much as my preferred name. It is such a miniscule but meaningful thing taken away by just words on a paper, by people who have no idea what it is like to be called by a name you don't want to be associated with. We, as a student body, are here to learn, but also to express ourselves and feel comfortable within school orientations. It is always stated that "you belong here," but as of recently, that's not the message I'm receiving. We want to live under the names that are right, but this policy degrades us for simply being happy with ourselves. We need to do better for the student body and do everything we can to make everybody feel welcomed, because these policies do the exact opposite and do nothing but anguish for the well-being of our school students. In the year of 2023, where people all over the world are fighting for these exact issues, we high school students have written these speeches, shown up here today, to fight for our right to have an identity, to be recognized and heard. I currently, a student in the Virginia school system, write this speech for the right to have a name and to be the person that I know I am. Not once have we asked that our parents be left out of our lives. At most, we ask for the bare minimum, to be properly identified by our name and the proper pronouns. We ask for verbal recognition, not to be referred to by what a screen tells a teacher to call us. Board members, please listen to the students who would have to suffer this reality every single day. They're the reason we keep coming back here. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jade Ortiz, then Naomi Jiamandu, and then Miranda White.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Jade Ortiz, and I am a sophomore from First Colonial High School. I am here, along with my classmates, to use my voice and speak out against the Virginia DOE's proposed policy against transgender students. The removal of the current protection that trans students have in our school system will be detrimental to the school and home life of these children. There is a reason many students choose not to tell their parents about their gender identity. Whether it is because doing so will endanger their home life, or just because they are not emotionally ready to do so yet, informing the student's guardian without their consent can cause so many potential issues. One in five transgender individuals have experienced homelessness within their life. I'd feel secure in assuming that they did not choose to be homeless. In fact, I'd feel even more secure in saying that the homelessness rates of transgender people is because of the closed minds of harsh parents and other guardians. There is also the matter of suicide rates. Transgender teens are more than four times likely to commit suicide. 56% of the trans youth in the United States have reported attempting suicide. Let me reiterate that for you, the youth. These are children trying to take their own lives. Children, and these rates are only more likely to rise if this bill is actually passed. The majority of trans students already have to deal with being referred to by their dead names and non-preferred pronouns while at home. Having to deal with it at school would just add even more stress, not to mention the amount of bullying that goes on in school. I can speak from firsthand experience when I say that bullying can tear a student apart. With bullying already existing as a massive problem in our schools, why would we hand bullies yet another way to terrorize their victims? Furthermore, these policies would force teachers to engage in the same deadnaming and misgendering that bullies weaponize, taking away yet another source of safety and security from trans students. Our school system preaches equality for all and equal opportunities for all students. There are not supposed to be any exceptions to this rule. Everyone deserves to be treated properly. You, as the school board, have a choice to make. You can sit there and allow these students to be discriminated against and further bullied, tormented in their households in the places that are supposed to be safe for them, or you can take action. Make it so no trans student has to worry about whether or not they'll still receive their parents' affection when they get home. Make it so they'll still have a safe place to truly embrace themselves and their identities. Don't allow them to feel any more ostracized than they likely already do. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Naomi Jiamandu, Miranda White, and then Ari Benjamin Serja.
Welcome.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Naomi Gadamu. I'm a senior at Lanston High School and Citywide SCA Secretary, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I am here to oppose the 2022 model policies regarding the treatment of transgender students. For as long as organized public schools have existed, students have gone by names other than their legal first names. Chris Jr. might abbreviate his name to CJ. Alexander might choose to go by Charles, or Spence might go by Spencer. Spencer might go by Spence. Just kidding. These sorts of exceptions have long been nothing more than a five-second discussion between teacher and student and a basic measure of kindness. Now, if we take a look at the proposed policies, they state that "school division personnel shall refer to each student using only the name that appears in the student's official record," or "if the student prefers any nickname commonly associated with the name that appears in the student's official record." Now, why is it that suddenly the only sort of name alteration that is allowed are nicknames? Going by a different name than your own, going by a different name than the one you were born with, regardless of whether it resembles the name that officially that appears in the official report, used to be behavior that no one would bat an eye at. But now, since transgender students want the same respect that their peers have had for decades, we have to change the rules. This isn't just illogical. This is discriminatory, and we have never and we should not tolerate discrimination in Virginia Beach. Beyond just their immorality, these policies could endanger the future of VBCPS. Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972 makes it very clear that if a school wants to maintain federal funding, it must completely refrain from sex-based discrimination. In recent years that have been questions surrounding how Title IX applies to transgender students, but the Federal Department of Education has responded unambiguously. On June 16th of 2021, the U.S. Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights issued a notice of interpretation stating that Title IX's protections would now
Thirty seconds.
Title IX's protections would now encompass discrimination against transgender students. Now, what does this mean for the average school district like VBCPS? It's simple. Any school that is found to engage in behavior that discriminates against transgender students can and will have their funding revoked. Board members, even if these policies aren't morally objectionable to you, hopefully you can see there are major practical reasons that they have to be reconsidered.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Miranda White, Ari Benjamin Serja, and then Savannah Newell.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Miranda White. I'm a student at First Colonial High School and the Law Academy. Do you have a trusted adult at school? This is one of the many questions often seen on the Social Emotional Learning Survey. VBCPS has made tremendous efforts to be aware of and help bolster their students' well-being, but in spite of these efforts, the 2022 model policies would harm the mental health of transgender and non-binary students in a myriad of ways. According to the Trevor Project, eighty percent of transgender students cited depression, stress, and/or anxiety as obstacles for learning in the past school year. Suicide rates are up four times higher than those of their peers. As of right now, VBCPS is among the school districts helping to end this epidemic by addressing students by their true identities. According to the University of Texas, a student whose preferred name is used experienced seventy-one percent less systems of severe depression, a thirty-four percent decrease in suicidal thoughts, and a sixty-five percent decrease in overall suicide attempts. Unfortunately, these new rules would completely eradicate all progress that has been made. The new guidelines state that "the school division personnel shall refer to each student using only the name that appears in the student's official record." By restricting trans students to the name that is on record, we are hurting an already ostracized group. Instead of a school district that helps lower these statistics, we will be a school system at fault for the rampant increase of these startling numbers. Not only are we deeply damaging trans students' well-being, but we're asking the very teachers that they trust to become the enforcers of this policy. School staff that already call students by the preferred name and pronouns would be forced to emotionally damage students every single day due to these new policies. This is not fair to them as human beings. They are being bound and fed the decrepit lies of hate in which they have to spew out against their will to a minority who is already vulnerable to such acts. When they choose a career in education, they promise themselves that they would strive to be the best and possible advocates for their supporters for all students in all walks of life. This board here has the opportunity not only to help students, but to save lives. By rejecting these model policies, the board can send a message to the transgender community within Virginia Beach public schools that they care about LGBT students' well-being. They would send a message to all VBCPS students that the SEL surveys are not just another box to check. This message is that the school district can actually care about their students' mental well-being and that they are not just another statistic. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ari Benjamin Serja, Savannah Newell, then Alex Estrada.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members, both old and new. My name is Ari Serja, and I'm a senior at the Legal Studies Academy at First Colonial High School, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Tonight, I would like to take a moment and respectfully respond to what Mr. Cowan had to say about the 2022 model guidelines. Mr. Cowan, last meeting you spoke of the love created in a parent's heart when their child is brought into the world. On this, I wholeheartedly agree. Looking back, I've been incredibly blessed with two loving parents who have cared for me and raised me into the person I am today. I've seen with my own eyes the love of a great parent. But Mr. Cowan, there is something else I've seen with my own eyes. I've walked into my third block English class, and I've seen my peers staring off into the walls without any semblance of hope. I've seen the face of a child who can't go home without fearing their own parents and their thoughts about their true self. I've met parents of trans students who have been unconditionally loving and supportive while giving their children the rock they need during the hard times in their lives. I wish that those parents were raising every child in this city, but that is unfortunately not the case. I wish that the mountains of studies I read didn't say that trans students have a near forty percent chance of experiencing homelessness. I wish I didn't have to tell you that a majority of those youth experiencing homelessness would go on to be sexually assaulted. I wish every single friend I have, including those who are LGBTQ and transgender, had a safe home to return to, but that isn't the world we live in today. By stating our disapproval with these proposed model policies, we are not trying to drive a wedge between parent and child. What we are trying to do is protect the trans students who know that their parents won't accept them, protect the students whose only safe place is within their school. Mr. Cowan, I truly believe that, like all of my friends here today, you are fighting with good intention and a true love for the students. You're right. I don't know what it's like to have a child on my own. However, there are perspectives only a student can see when they walk the halls. I may not know the intense love of having your own child, but what I do know is what it's like to see my friends' eyes bloodshot from a night of tears from what their parents had to say to them. Last meeting, the question was raised: is there ever a time when information should be withheld by the school system from a parent or legal guardian? The answer is an emphatic yes, when that child's life is endangered. Mr. Cowan, I truly appreciate the perspective that you respectfully brought to this board. However, I hope you consider ours as well. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Savannah Newell, then Alex Estrada, then Jacob Cruz.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Savannah Newell, and I am a student at First Colonial. This is now my fourth time speaking out against the proposed model policies. Before I came here tonight, my mother asked me why I was speaking at another school board meeting. She asked why it was so important that I continue to do this, and if me speaking was even truly making a difference. The truth is, I don't know. I don't know if me coming to this board and speaking is making a difference. I don't know what you think nor how you will vote, but I do know why I am speaking. I'm speaking because I fight for those who are unable to fight for themselves. I'm speaking because if the proposed model policies are implemented as is, the death and the abuse of transgender and non-binary students would skyrocket. I am speaking because I do not want to see my friends nor my peers become a part of an ever-growing horrific statistic, because they are more than just a number. They are someone's friend, someone's sibling, someone's student, and they are so much more. And I will not stand by and watch their respect and their privacy be disregarded simply because they identify as transgender or non-binary. I know what I want my legacy to be. I want to be remembered as someone who advocates and fights for those in need, not someone who quietly watches from the sidelines and allows the policies to be passed without a fight, because if the policies are implemented as is, innocent lives will be endangered. According to the National Library of Medicine, eighty-two percent of transgender students have had suicidal ideations, with seventy-three percent of transgender youth reporting psychological parental abuse, and thirty-nine percent reporting physical abuse. I will not sit by and allow my friends to become a part of these statistics simply because of one overreaching policy proposed by the Virginia Department of Education. So, tonight, I am asking you to choose your legacy. How do you want to be remembered? Do you want to be remembered as a school board who ensured the respect and the safety for all students, regardless of gender or sexual orientation, giving them the right to express themselves freely? Or do you want to be regarded as a school board who raised an already alarming statistic, as a board who regarded a student's worth and privacy based on how they identified themselves? The decision you make will set the tone for the rest of your term. I know the legacy I want, and I know how I'm going to get there. The real question is, what do you want your legacy to be? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alex Estrada, and then Jacob Cruz.
Welcome.
Thank you. Over the past few months, we have spoken to this board not to make political statements, not to get social media likes or followers, but to protect our fellow students. As Ms. Weems stated, this board was created not to become a partisan body of Republicans and Democrats opposing each other every turn. This board is created to avoid partisan conflicts in order to do right for its constituents and protect our students and teachers. Now, we have seen an overreaching, destructive policy proposed by the Virginia Department of Education, which will force our teachers to deadname, misgender, and out their students, forcing students, teachers, and counselors to become a part of this political game being played by the state. We have given you the statistics to show that these issues within these policies have tangible negative effects upon transgender and non-binary students. We have given numerous anecdotes showing students who would be directly harmed by this policy. We have given many ways for you to consider this policy based upon legality, and we have even shown you the lack of research conducted upon the creation of these model policies in relation to past policies of the same nature. However, I worry that none of this matters to a select few members of this board due to the administration that passed these policies in the first place. It is unfortunate that school boards all across America have become pawns for their political parties and have left their students, teachers, and constituents out to dry. As a Virginia Beach city public school student, I am pleading with this board: do not play politics with our lives, although it may be uncomfortable, although you may see some harsh tweets thrown your way, although you may face opposition in your next election from your own party. I am asking you to dig deep within yourself, remember why you chose to serve on this board in the first place, because I am certain that every single member of this board chose to serve for the exact same reason. You care. You care about your students. You care about teachers. You care about making Virginia Beach the best place to raise your children and let them blossom into successful adults. However, caring means making sacrifices. Caring means standing up to an administration you traditionally support. Caring means knowing in your heart you have done the right thing, even after that means there is a chance you may lose reelection. As a conservative, these are things I have had to learn recently, and the reason that I am here, in spite of being a Republican, in spite of my political aspirations being potentially thrown out the window, is because I came to a realization that running for election is worthless if you are not willing to stand for what you know is right, even if it may be unpopular to others.
Thirty seconds.
I am begging this board to do what is right and protect our transgender and non-binary students. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jacob Cruz.
Welcome.
Good evening, Board members. Thank you for the chance to speak tonight. I want to state something that should be obvious. What you've witnessed tonight and what you've witnessed for the past seven meetings is not normal. It isn't ordinary for so many students to relentlessly attend and speak out at board meetings, but we do it because the problem that we face isn't ordinary either. I saw the faces on my friends when these policies were proposed. I saw the fear that overtook them. For the four years that I've been in high school in Virginia Beach, school has been a safe haven for these students and for many more. For some, it is the only safe haven that they have. To take that away is to take away everything from those students, even their own names. We all saw the wave of fear that washed over our friends when these proposed policies were announced, and that is why we bring ourselves here. I wouldn't be able to sleep at night if I knew that I could have done something to try and help my friends out in this dire situation, and I didn't. You might be wondering why there aren't more of our transgender peers here speaking tonight, but that's because they can't, because they are afraid they might be outed, the same thing that might happen to them under these policies. It's so easy to look back at moments of triumph like Brown v. Board, Loving Virginia, and Obergefell v. Hodges as if they were inevitable. From where we sit right now, these landmark decisions seem like easy choices. They seem obvious, but that's never what they were. Those moments were forged by the tireless efforts of activists who fought not until they grew weary, but until they won. But in spite of that, activism wasn't the only ingredient in these moments of progress. Those moments were also forged by open ears, people in power willing to hear passionate voices advocating for a better future, people, as Ms. Weems put it, who are willing to work in the messy middle. I do not expect those board members that disagree with us to have a complete change of heart. I simply ask you to listen. Listen to all these students, listen to their words, and listen to the hearts behind them, because we have put everything we have into our plea to you tonight, and this is not easy work what we're doing. I'll make one thing certain: we aren't going away. No policy will stop the tide that's coming. Every meeting, we're a little stronger, our speeches are a little sharper, our research is a little better, and our ties and our necklaces will be a little bit straighter on our necks, even though I'm not wearing one tonight. Each and every meeting, we will keep inching forward a little more until we ensure freedom for all of our peers. I'll admit that in times past, we thought about when we would stop. First we thought
Thirty seconds.
First, we thought we'd only come here once. Then, we thought maybe three meetings was the charm. Then, we thought we'd be done by the new year. But recently, and only recently, we've excited exactly when we'll stop. We'll stop when no student has to walk the halls of their school in fear. We'll stop when trans students get the respect that they deserve. We'll stop when you do what's right, and I am confident that this board will do that. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that was our last in-person student speaker. I just wanted to do a time check.
Yes, I am looking at the time. We have seven minutes until eight. We certainly have at least probably forty-five more minutes of speakers, the way I'm calculating it. So I am going to bring it forth to the board. Do we want to finish listening to the speakers? We have seventeen more, sixteen in person, and one online. Or do we want to go ahead with the rest of our agenda and then come back to the speakers? Ms. Owens.
I would propose that we listen to two or three more speakers, like it's on our agenda, and then at that point, we do our information items so that our staff members who are planning that way can present, and that we then come back and hear the rest of our speakers as planned. If we had less, I would feel different if it was just
Does everybody else agree with that? Please, raise your hand if you do. Okay, thank you. That's what we will do. Our next speaker, three.
Okay, our next speakers will be Kathy Slindy, Charlotte Clutch, and then Paula Chang.
Welcome.
Good evening, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, Dr. Spence, and members of the board. I'm Kathleen Slindy, the proud president of the VBEA. I begin by acknowledging the shooting of a teacher in the Newport News last week. It is useless to say enough is enough, or it takes a village. What we need to do is go to work. So as this new board begins, I ask you to put aside any personal agendas and preconceived notions and be open to that work. So what do our students need? They need buildings fully staffed with highly qualified personnel who have the resources they need to do their work, and that will only happen when we are the number-one school division, able to attract and retain the best and the brightest. This district is in the midst of a very real crisis, and you, as a board, must tackle many issues immediately. In the interest of time, I'll address two concerns tonight. First, I implore you to use your best resources, your employees. First, I implore you to use your best resources, your employees. Listen and work with them. They know the issues that matter to them. Highly qualified, experienced educators must be involved in conversations about changes, whether in programs, curriculum, or calendars. Too often, unnecessary changes and mandates are placed on teachers with no real benefit to students' learning. Sending in unnecessary training or meetings for a new initiative is often a waste of potential planning time. The time lost means teachers are working very long days and still taking work home. This lack of work balance has been accepted as the norm, seemingly expected by leadership as part of that work, and is the reason we have educators leaving the profession at a very alarming rate. Invite employees to have a seat at the table and a real voice in the decision-making. Second, let's work together to create a climate and culture that will make educators apply to and remain in Virginia Beach. The Salary and Compensation Study showed you where Virginia Beach ranks in the state and the region. In the December thirteenth workshop, the consultation firm showed evidence that using option number one to increase pay, making the salary and compensation package attractive to both our new teachers and our veteran teachers, is the only way to reach VBCPS's stated goal. Pay is important, so is employee wellness, work-life balance, and respect in the workplace. It is crucial that employees are well-treated and that leadership's actions demonstrate how their work is valued. Specialists, ESPs, and counselors feel disrespected when they are unable to do their work because they're pulled to sub in classrooms without teachers. Students suffer when providing services is challenging and positions go unfilled. Learning gaps occur when positions go unfilled. Employee morale is low when positions go unfilled, and once positions are filled, new educators and new administrators must have experienced, successful mentors.
Thirty seconds.
We are currently at a tipping point that is taking its toll on everyone. VBCPS has always had amazing schools with amazing employees who are devoted to the children they serve. We need to make sure it remains that way. VBEA is working to create a liaison program that will help school board members gain insight into the important work of teachers and how your voice impacts our students and employees. Place your personal agendas and preconceived notions aside, let's work together on these important issues. It will take all of us, as a board, and you as the board, working together to deliver what is right for students and employees.
About his time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Charlotte Clonch.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Scarlett Clonch, and this is my eighth year as the PALS teacher at Providence Elementary. It is important, I begin by saying, I love my job, I love my staff. I truly believe that we work together to make a difference every day with every child. Yet, when the opportunity arose to award bonuses to all staff, we were left out last year and this year, every single opportunity. Channel thirteen news, October twenty twenty, teachers providing both in-person and virtual instruction will get an increased stipend. I taught all year, both in-person and virtual. I received no stipend or consideration. Virginia Pilot headline, December twenty-two, "School Board Approves $1,000 Bonus for All Staff," quote, "retention incentives for all division staff," but you did not include all staff, did you? The staff you left out last year, nurses, office staff, cafeteria manager, were included this year, but still not PALS teachers. The 2022 Virginia State Budget addresses bonuses in item one thirty-seven, number three H, as one-time bonus payment equal to one percent of base pay for instructional and support positions, yet you did not support the PALS teachers. Channel three story, "VBCPS Say They Must Reserve At Least Twenty Percent of Funds to Address Learning Loss Through the Implementation of Evidence-Based Interventions." PALS is exactly an evidence-based intervention. The story quotes "learning loss" as the number-one spending priority, and yet you did not make us a priority. So am I all staff, or am I not? Am I all staff and worthy of the bonuses and feel compelled to complete my mandatory training, or am I not and I will not? My contract states that I am not entitled to benefits or pay associated with permanent full-time employment, but a bonus is neither, and the disbursement was at your discretion to administer. This is my line in the dirt, the dirt y'all keep kicking on me. PALS teachers must complete the training on our own time, because to do it during school hours would mean we would have to forego a full day of working with students to complete it, and every year I have done it without question. So to answer your question raised in the aforementioned channel three story, how should VBCPS spend the $64 million of federal funds? Don't sow discord amongst all staff. You don't kick dirt, or you'll lose another outstanding teacher to another district or another profession. As a certified teacher with a master's degree in teaching, the idea of leaving education crushes me. I told you I loved my little school. Ask literally any person at Providence, but my emotional health is in jeopardy as I cannot stop stewing over this. But again, we were not given a mental health wellness day like the rest of the all-staff. Thank you for your time.
It is eight o'clock. Do we want to continue with one more speaker or suspend?
It is eight o'clock. Let's move on with our agenda, please.
Okay.
And we will be coming back to speakers after our agenda is met on number fourteen. Yeah, after our information. Return to public comments if needed. So we are on thirteen information, the American Rescue Plan Act, ESER III update. Our presenter is Crystal Page, Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chairwoman Weems, school board members, and Dr. Spence. This presentation is to provide the board with an update on the submission of our American Rescue Plan, known as ESER III, and recent public input on how these remaining funds should be allocated. Also, at the end, I will provide an update on remaining active federal pandemic relief Virginia Beach City Public Schools has received. This next slide is a high-level overview. The American Rescue Plan of 2021 was signed into law on March eleventh, twenty twenty one. These funds were provided to help safely reopen our schools, sustain the safe operation of schools, and address any of the impact of COVID-19 on the nation's students. For ESER III, our district was allocated a little over eighty-two point five million dollars, and the period of availability of those funds began on March thirteenth, twenty twenty, and goes through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. We also have an additional twelve months of extended time until September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four for any carryover obligations of these funds. Generally, we have to determine the allowable use of these funds. Some of those things that are considered is if the use of the funds is intended to prevent, prepare for, or respond to COVID-19 pandemic, including the impact on the social, emotional, mental health, and academic needs of students. We also look at whether the expenditure falls under the authorized use of ESER funds. We do have to consider some cost principles and some audit requirements that we need to look at, and we look at whether the expenditure is reasonable and necessary. The point being is that we have some limitations on the allowable uses of these funds. Some of the examples of allowable uses of these funds are learning loss, educational technology, some upgrades to our facilities, PPE equipment, supplies to sanitize and clean buildings, recruitment and retention incentives for hard-to-fill positions, and other uses addressing mental health supports and social-emotional needs. Other plan uses also include HVAC projects at three schools, Kingston Elementary, Malibu Elementary, Delia Elementary, at a total cost of approximately eight million dollars, also robust summer school opportunities, continuation of Virtual Virginia, and ongoing tutoring. As mentioned, one of the requirements of the ESER III funding is to address learning loss. We are required to reserve twenty percent of the eighty-two point five million in order to address learning loss, and that is through the implementation of evidence-based interventions such as tutoring, summer learning or enrichment, extended day, comprehensive after-school programs, or extended school-year programs. We must ensure that these interventions respond to students' academic, social, and emotional needs, and address any disproportionate impact of COVID-19 on underrepresented student subgroups. There were two plan requirements for the ESER III application. We looked at these as one being an operational plan and one as a financial plan. The operational plan is the plan for safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services. We mainly had to address in-person instruction and continuity of services as it relates to student academic needs and social-emotional needs. We are required to seek public comment on the plan, and every six months through the initial award period, update the plan, seek additional public comment, and address the extent to which we adopted policies aligned with any updated CDC guidance. On the second plan, that is more of our financial plan, the school division had to submit a plan to describe how the funds were used to implement prevention and mitigation strategies, how we were going to use the twenty percent requirement of learning loss, how the remaining eighty percent of those funds will be used, and how it will ensure that those funds reserved to address learning loss responds to academic, social, emotional, and mental health for all students, including student groups. The financial plan is periodically amended through the Virginia Department of Education as priorities change. On October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, a summary of the 2022 National Assessment of Education progress data for Virginia was submitted to the public. The data indicated that Virginia had the most significant declines in reading and math in the nation. In response to this data, the governor released a seven-step plan titled "Our Commitment to Virginia's Children." Action seven of the plan directed the state superintendent of public instruction to require all school divisions to reengage the public in consultation and update their ESER spending plans. In response to the directive, the school division invited the community to participate in a survey. The survey was open from November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, to December second, twenty twenty-two, and the community was asked to select the options that they would like to see as the focus of spending the remaining ESER III funds. The survey was put together with four categories: prevention and mitigation strategies, addressing unfinished learning, addressing student needs, and other uses of those funds. Under those categories were options and examples that participants could choose from, as well as text boxes where they could add additional comment. This slide shows our participation. We had almost forty-eight hundred responses. You can see the majority of them were from parents and guardians. The next subgroup was employees, and then there were the lower responses, were from community members and students. This slide shows our stakeholder groups. You can see that the top three groups are those representing the interests of children with disabilities, English learners, children experiencing homelessness, children in foster care, migratory students, and children who are incarcerated, early childhood education providers and families, and community-based organizations. The remaining two groups were civil rights organizations and tribes. Under the first category, prevention and mitigation strategies, you can see that maintaining healthy facilities and improvements to HVAC and ventilation systems were the top two responses. Then we see a drop in responses for vaccination support, PPE equipment, COVID testing, face coverings for non-vaccinated individuals, and other. Under addressing unfinished learning, you see the top four responses of evidence-based interventions and instructional resources: enhanced summer learning programs, expanded tutoring program during evening hours, and supplementing learning through instruction outside school hours. And then you see the responses drop off on the last three options of virtual or distance learning, other, and extending the school year. Under addressing student needs, the top two options were addressing mental health and social-emotional needs, support for at-risk student populations, and feeding students seven days a week were the third and fourth options, with special ed recovery services, English learner supports, and other completing the responses. And under the last category of other uses for funds, you see the top response was support teacher and staff retention and recruitment strategies, followed by facility improvements, technology, providing internet supports, and other. This slide represents the status of the ARPESER III grant. Again, the award amount was a little over eighty-two point five million dollars. The grant expires on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. We will need to encumber the funds by this date and file reimbursement by November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. The grant is about thirty-six percent expended or encumbered, and as of December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, funds available are approximately fifty-three million dollars. The ESER spending plan template provided by the Virginia Department of Education has also been updated and should be posted to our website by the end of this week. This last slide is just to review some other pandemic relief funding that we still have active. The first grant listed is a small bus driver incentive grant of a little over twenty-seven thousand dollars, set to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The grant is written to supplement the $3,000 bus driver recruitment and retention incentive currently written in our ESER grants. Many of these incentive payments have been paid out, and we will be closing this grant shortly. This next group of grants expires September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. You can see them listed, the Title VI B IDEA Section 611 ARP and Section 619 ARP mirror our Title VI B special ed grants that we typically receive every year. The two IDEA ARP grants total approximately three point seven million dollars. These are supplemental funding and fall under the same regulations as our Title VI grants. Very little of this group of grants has been spent to date, but that should change as the year continues. Currently proposed expenditures for the Section 611 ARP are for temporary employment agreements for teacher assistants, materials and supplies, and online content such as iXL. Section 619 ARP is special ed preschool, and currently proposed expenditures are for professional learning and materials and supplies. The ARP homeless grants fall under the umbrella of the McKinney-Vento Act. These two grants total approximately four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. The homeless one grant is to be used for homeless student transportation and professional development. The homeless two grant is to be used for two social workers and homeless student transportation. To date, ten percent of this funding has been expended or encumbered. The next grant is the ESER II grant. The award amount for this grant was a little over thirty-six point seven million dollars. This grant also expires September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and again, we'll need to encumber the funds by this date and file reimbursement by November fifteenth of twenty twenty-three. The grant is about ninety-nine percent expended or encumbered, and we still have a little over eight months to close out this grant. The plan is to have this grant spent out by the end of this fiscal year. This next group of grants expires September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The first three, ARP Summer Learning, ARP Before and After School, and ARP Unfinished Learning, were filed under one application. These grants total approximately two point four million dollars, and to date, six percent of these grants have been expended or encumbered. So as the name suggests, summer learning funds are to be used to address several areas of high need related to summer learning. Currently, the approved application calls for summer school counselor contracts and twelve hundred dollar stipends for teachers in high-need areas, two sessions for English and math, and one session for economics and personal finance. There is also budgeted funding for fees related to the CHKD Bridge Program. The before-and-after school grant was written to provide one teacher and one counselor at three schools for two and a half hours a day during the instructional school years. In addition, there are funds available for what is called Jason web-based PBL STEM activities for K through twelve, professional development of teachers, and an after-school excellence network partnership with Johns Hopkins to provide opportunities for advanced learning via an after-school STEM and SEL program facilitated by VBCPS instructor and counselor in collaboration with a team from the Johns Hopkins University Project. There is also funding for transportation for after-school programs and field trips. To date, thirty-five percent of this grant has been expended or encumbered. The ARP Unfinished Learning Grant was written to provide concurrent teaching stipends ranging between two hundred and fifty dollars and two thousand dollars per quarter, based on their special education role, number of subject lessons per day, and/or a number of grade levels taught. There is also funding written into the grant for instructional supplies, phonics booster for reading, hand-to-mind manipulatives, Mango small group kits for math. To date, there have been no expenditures or encumbrances. So for a number of years, we have received state funding to support mentoring first-year teachers with no experience. We did receive a small ARP funding in the amount of a little over thirty-nine thousand dollars to support the mentor-teacher program. To date, none of those funds have yet to be expended or encumbered. This last grant I will talk about is the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund HVAC Replacement and Improvement Grant. This grant is for a little over thirteen million dollars and expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. This grant has a required hundred percent match funded from CIP funds. The grant is written for HVAC renovation or replacements for Kempfville High School, First Colonial High School, Landstown High School, College Park Elementary, Corporate Landing Middle School, Rosemont Forest Elementary School, WT Cook Elementary School, Pembroke Elementary School, and Trantwood Elementary School. To date, there have been no funds expended or encumbered. This process on these projects can be complex and lengthy. We are working very closely with facility services staff who monitor the progress of these contracts, and we are... and we are in order to ensure those funds are expended within the time of the award period. That concludes the presentation, and I'll be glad to answer any questions the board may have.
Ms. Manning?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Pedem. Sorry, I can't see you very well down there. So I know that we put a lot of our funds into recruitment and retention bonuses over the last year or so, and I was not aware that our PALS teachers were not receiving these funds. Is that because they're state employees?
That is not. That's something that was decided with HR based on their role, and I don't want to speak out of, from HR's point of view.
Comes Ms. Woodhouse.
Yes, good evening. The bonuses went to all staff in an allocated FTE position. Our PALS teachers are temporary employment staff, and they sign an annual agreement, meaning they are not always guaranteed a position from year to year, even though we do have some members who stay with us for some time. So that was the gist of how the decision was made for bonuses. So it was to all full-time staff in an allocated FTE position, meaning a full-time contract.
Are they considered state employees? So would they qualify for anything coming from the state? Is what I'm getting at.
They would not qualify for anything that I'm aware of coming from the state? Okay, I see Danielle Calucci saying no, no ma'am.
So I think that our PALS teachers have been extremely valuable over these last couple of years. So if that's something that our board can consider with some of these additional funds that we have to utilize over the next year, if it meets the criteria, I'd like for the board to consider that. Thank you.
Can I speak to that just briefly?
Please.
So we have a significant number of positions that are not in full-time equivalent allocated positions. So PALS teachers are one group of those, but we have a lot of other positions that fall into that category. What I think would be best is if we were to pull that information for the board so you can see exactly what we're talking about, because I would be concerned if you, if we were to take up one position and not at least take up a discussion about all of the other non-FTE equivalent positions, you're going to hear from some of those folks. You already have heard.
Yeah, if we could get a brief on that, that would be great.
Yeah, so we'll figure out a time, and during agenda planning, we'll figure out a time to bring that back.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Brown, do you still want to speak?
You already answered my question, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Weems.
Yes, I was just asking for that information as well, thank you.
Anyone else? Any other questions? Ms. Pedem. Okay, thank you, Ms. Pedem.
13B Policy Review Committee, PRC recommendation. Mrs. Camilla Lanetti, School Board Legal Counsel, Regulation 5-6.2 Appeals and Appeals Procedures for Non-Disciplinary Actions.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Camille Lanetti. I'm School Board Attorney. On behalf of the Policy Review Committee, I'm representing to you tonight the recommendation on policy, oh, sorry, this is regulation. I'm going to explain to you why it's a regulation. Regulation 5-6.2. In matters involving disciplinary issues, this is a requirement by the Virginia Code that the School Board does approve those regulations, which is why you see regulations under these circumstances. Regulation 5-6.2 has to do with appeals and procedures, appeal procedures for non-disciplinary, but it is still disciplinary issues. Under Section A, this deals with the appeal process. A recommendation coming from the Department of School Leadership is that we add a procedure having to do with appeals, the 2.0 waiver rule involving Policy 549. So when looking at this particular regulation, the recommendation to the PRC, which the PRC is bringing forward to you tonight, is under Section A, to remove Section 3 and 4 as they're currently written, renumber the appeals for out-of-zones as Section 3, and to add Section 4 that would read, "Appeals to the 2.0 waiver rule reflected in Policy 549 shall be governed by this regulation beginning at Level 2," which is one of the procedures in here. "Permissible reasons for appeal include a procedural regularity on behalf of the division, injure, other circumstance finding the previous waiver unstable, or undue hardship as defined by the Virginia High School League." And going down further, oops, there's a slight recommendation. I'll pop that up. A slight moderation, regulation change in Level 2 and Section 2 under A that the administrative office would be determined as, based on the reason for the appeal. So the suggestion that would happen there and in Section Level 2, Level 2A and Level B is that you add the phrase "as determined by the reason for appeal." That allows it go to the appropriate administrative office having to deal with the subject of the appeal. Other than that, those are the only recommendations coming out of PRC at this time, and they're asking that you approve those regulations to your next meeting. Are there any questions I can answer about this regulation? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to return to the public comments, starting with number three. In-person speaker.
Okay, so our next speaker will be Paula Chang, then Dan Chang, then Heather Thomas.
Good evening. I first want to say congratulations to the new school board. There's much work to be done to reverse the wokeness and indoctrination within our schools, and that's why we need good leadership, and that's what I'm here to speak about tonight. Regarding the reelection of school board chair and vice chair, in the past few years, there has been little to no trust in school board leadership or direction, and I think we can all agree with that. So parents and citizens voted in November with an expectation of a new board, and with that new board, new board leadership, and a return to high-quality student education. What we have seen tonight is not new board leadership tonight, and that is wrong. What we have seen is basically the same symphony in a different conductor. Same philosophy, different chairperson. Mrs. Weems, you had publicly expressed a willingness to run for chair, had the votes to be elected, and the responsibility to the students of Virginia Beach to run for that position. The citizens and parents elected you, Mrs. Weems, and the majority of the new school members, excuse me, school board members, to reverse the actions of the previous board. There was a duty for you to represent and lead on the principal's parents, and citizens have fought for so hard these past two years, and that they fought for to help reelect you. So how does Mrs. Riggs, and this is no, nothing personal, but it will seem it, who supported the previous leadership possibly lead the reversal of the bad policies enacted when she violated the trust of parents and students, parents and citizens of Virginia Beach? How can you earn our trust, Mrs. Riggs? Mrs. Riggs, who appears to vote at the direction of the VBEA, participated in the extended closing of schools, negatively impacting the educational progress of our students. She worked against parental rights, which is the hallmark of our society. She voted to remove Val Salin class rank, lowered the behavioral standards, and voted to support issues to which parents and citizens greatly disapproved. She also locked parents or agreed with locking parents out of the schools. Mrs. Riggs showed immense, who now leads the school board, showed immense disrespect for the opinions of citizens and parents who she is to serve by instead locking them out of the administrative building that we pay for, limiting students' citizen speech, mocking speech speakers from the dais, actually getting out of receipt during a meeting and taking the legal property of an active speaker who is properly addressing the board but with whom Mrs. Riggs disagreed, and taking the speaker's property and throwing it on the floor in front of the board, school employees, and the public. Wow, and now you want our trust. This board chair twice walked out of a school board meeting when she did not like what citizens and parents said, pretending the citizens and board were out of line. She spoke with the press, giving misleading information indicating that honest and concerned citizens at meetings were threatening to board members in an attempt to alter public perception. She has worked against these who are her superiors and has thus disqualified herself. Yet we see her elected chair. So why, Mrs. Weems, was this chair position handed to Mrs. Riggs? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dan Chang, then Heather Thomas, then Erin Alonzo.
Congratulations to the new school board. Voters on November 8th reminded the board of what parents and citizens have been working here to say that, that you work for us. We deserve your respect. We, the people, are who you answer to. You do not answer or blindly follow the direction of Dr. Spence. Everyone on the dais took an oath to the U.S. Constitution, and it is the expectation of the citizens of Virginia Beach that you honor and abide by that oath. Dr. Spence, as a reminder, for the length of time you remain as an employee of the Virginia Beach City Public Schools, that you are just that, an employee of the citizens of Virginia Beach. This applies to Dr. Robertson and the entire administrative staff. It is time to do what you were hired to do for the K-12. Educate students to think critically. Allow them to develop their minds. Not, do not shape them with indoctrination. It is also time to respect the monies provided to the board and administration by the taxpayers of Virginia Beach, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and the federal government of the United States of America. This board has the responsibility to strictly oversee and manage the budget and demand accountability. No more of the board to be seeing the budget until shortly before it's voted on. This board needs to take ownership of these dollars and not blindly accept what is way before them by Dr. Spence's staff. As an additional note, Dr. Spence hires many people with PhDs and all who expect to be called doctor. Fair enough. But when there are so many people with the same title, the value of such title tends to be diluted. To my fellow citizens, know that your opinions as parents and citizens regarding our society, schools, government, and most importantly, our children, is more value than a PhD you hire to serve you. When we speak, they should listen. You know your child better than anyone, with or without a fancy title. One last point, since I have 38 seconds. If you look at the budget the CFO presented, my experience is do not let those funds.
30 seconds.
They have, there's a tail on it. One of them was at the end of next year for HVAC at the schools. They should be looked at under contract now. And don't, I'll tell you, they will expire unless there's some action done. And I didn't get to hear about all the other ISRA things, but those are priorities that should be taken care of, and I agree, they're important. Don't let the funds expire. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Heather Thomas, then Erin Alonzo, and then Michelle Clure.
Good evening, Chair Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Heather Thomas, 23-year educator with Virginia Beach, and in my 13th year in my current position as a library media specialist, I'm here to talk about books in my library collection. But first, I want to tell you about a second-grade student at my school. I had the pleasure of teaching her the past two summers during summer learning camp, where I taught her in kindergarten and then first grade. She is from Egypt, is Muslim, and wears a headwrap to school. I showed her the book "The Proudest Blue" about a Muslim girl who wears a hijab to school. My student was shocked that there was a book in our library that represented her culture. She immediately checked the book out and continued to check it out week after week. She checked it out so many times that one day I asked her why she didn't check out something different. She said that she read it each night with her mother and father, who had never in their lives seen a book about a girl who looked like them, and it made them so happy. I tell you this to let you know that every student has a story. Now I'd like to tell you about how we, as trained librarians, select books. First, we have master's degrees with specific training in book selection. We take classes on best practices for choosing materials. We do several book orders each year that take us days to complete. We research award-winning books and books that have been found in professional school library journals vetted by experts in our field. We survey our staff, asking for topics where we may have gaps in our own school collections. Most importantly, though, we take into account our student populations, and we ask our students what they want to see in our libraries. This is why I ordered more books, for example, from my Egyptian student that I mentioned before. Having books that reflect our students' interests, their families, and backgrounds is crucial to developing readers. Every student deserves to see themselves in the books that they read, and I do mean every student. Those with disabilities, those with, those from non-traditional families, biracial families, families with two moms and two dads. Students should have access to books that reflect their lives. Let's trust our school librarians to know how to select books based on their school's needs. I encourage you all to please visit our school libraries, see the work that is being done, see our amazing school's exploratory maker spaces. You will see the safe
30 seconds.
...culture school librarians have created, places where relationships and students matter, not just some students, but all students. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Erin Alonzo, Michelle Clure, and then Georgianne Allen.
Good evening. My name is Erin Alonzo. I graduated from First Colonial High School earlier this year, and I am about to begin my second semester at Harvard University. In March of last year, I stood before the members of the school board regarding the protection of a marginalized group of students, and I am disappointed that I am here once again under a similar context. As I was reading the 2022 model plan proposed by the VDOE, I noticed in Section D regarding the identification of students, the first bullet states that every transgender student wishing to change their name or a means of address should be treated with respect and dignity at school. However, it seems like the points directly following do everything to ensure that that is not the case. I would like to highlight the fourth bullet point of this section, which states that those who wish to change their name or pronouns that they are addressed by, they either need parental permission in writing or students, quote, "persistent and sincere belief that their gender differs from his or her sex." The reason why I appear in front of the board today is to raise concern for how this process is problematic and detrimental to the well-being of transgender students. Now, while searching through a database of research that I now have access to, I came across a research study of 90 transgender youth from 10 different major cities in North America. In the study, the term relational ambiguity was introduced and defined as the feelings of uncertainty about the relationship, particularly about parents' perceptions and acceptability of particular behaviors. And in the study, 73% of participants had stated that there were changes in relationships associated with non-conforming gender identity development. These changes included 36% reported a lack of intimacy, 30% ignoring gender variance, 26% parental abuse, 29% getting kicked out of their homes. And while these are just statistics, obviously, there are related actions towards them. These are young students trying to discover themselves, and in many cases, cannot turn to the people that have raised them for support. So where do they look for support? The school, where they are surrounded by their friends and teachers and other adults that they are supposed to look up to. Yet by enacting this policy, transgender students are once again stripped from a place of support, and instead, school becomes a place where they are reminded that they can't be who they are. When a teacher calls these students by the wrong name or uses the wrong pronouns, it truly does take the focus away from learning and instead puts the student in an uncomfortable position. How persistent and sincere
Thirty seconds.
does a student need to be to convince them and to convince the school that they are who they are? Now that I attend an institution like Harvard, I am reminded of everything that BBCPS has provided me. I've worked with Dr. Spence on the Student Advisory Board. I've been involved in citywide SCA. And I feel as though it is my responsibility to advocate for those who are unlike from me and whatever obstacles they might encounter. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michelle Clure, then Georgianne Allen, then Teri Stevens. Michelle Clure. Georgianne Allen.
Good evening, members of the school board. I spoke on this topic at the October meeting. My name is Teri Stevens. I have two children who graduated from a public high school in Virginia Beach. In addition to receiving a fine academic education, both were afforded community service with their memberships in National Honor Society. I am here to encourage you to allow all high school students the opportunity for participation in developing community knowledge by offering a high school elective in service learning. Service learning is a teaching method that combines meaningful service to the community with curriculum-based learning. Typically, service learning projects will meet a need in the community, help develop student responsibility and skills, and establish community partnerships while tackling real-world issues. A key intent of service learning is to instill a sense of civic responsibility by encouraging students to positively contribute to society. We would join other jurisdictions in Virginia and our nation with very successful service learning curriculum. Since 1997, Maryland requires every student to participate in service learning. However, they started in the 1980s with service learning as an elective. Community projects there have addressed such needs as hunger, illness, and pollution, to name a few. Each year in Maryland, the graduating class of approximately 59,000 students provides the greater community with approximately four million hours of service. In Virginia Beach, some examples of service learning may include starting a tutoring program for younger students, studying sustainability and encouraging the community to engage, identifying senior citizen needs in their city and taking action, or working with horticulturists to start community gardens. In 1961, U.S. President John F. Kennedy inspired Americans to service by proclaiming, "And so, my fellow Americans, ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country." You can help the next generation rise to his words by implementing a service learning elective in our area. And you can start with a pilot program at one or two of our high schools. Thank you for your time, and I do have some brochures for each of you from the Maryland, from the state of Maryland on service learning. Is there somebody I can pass them to? Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Tawana Walters, then Jennifer Basso, then Solo Ortiz.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you so much for hearing me out. Today, I'm here to speak about the Choice Program. First, I want to introduce you guys to my student. His name is Ethan McDaniel, and he attends Larkspur Middle School. This is his first year. Ethan is an AP student. He owns and operates his own online store, and his favorite subjects are math and science. His goal in life since he was the age of four, and he hasn't changed now, he's 11, is to be a scientist and to attend Yale University. I don't know where Yale came from, but that's his goal. Okay. So the first time I was introduced to the Choice Program was during Ethan's first occurrence with misbehavior at school. I've had a long history because Ethan is so intelligent. He's a little bit of what the kids call an emo. He's like this, like a little turtle in his shell all the time. I usually get phone calls in regards to Ethan being bullied at school. So the first time I got a phone call where Ethan misbehaved was a situation where he responded back and hit a student with a pencil. Now, we accepted the school's disciplinary action in regards, because at the end of the day, wrong is wrong. He should have told the teacher or someone someone is bullying him instead of reacting adversely. But the problem that I have this evening is that the administrator that called me, her first reaction is to put Ethan in the Choice Program. I've done some research in the Choice, about the Choice Program, and it looks like the Choice Program, which looks like an excellent program for kids with behavioral problems. But for me, this has never been a situation in regards to my student. So now Ethan's grades are starting to diminish and fall, not because of anything that he's doing, because I sit with him and do work with him, but because, I'm not really sure. I'm not going to blame the teachers, but that's something that I'm working on. But I recently had a meeting with the principal, and now there's a whole bunch of behavioral problems on my student record that I have not been previewed to or contacted about, and I feel like it's a funding issue that certain marginalized
Thirty seconds.
group of students are being put into a Choice Program, whether they have behavioral problems or not, or we're adding situations on their record to have a history of behavioral problems so that they qualify for the Choice Program. But I'm here to let you guys know that I'm Ethan's mom, and I'm going to fight for him on every single level, because that's not something that's for my child. That's it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Basso, then Solo Ortiz, then Erin Bennett.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Jennifer. I'm a Virginia Beach resident with a child that attends a Virginia Beach City Public High School. I would like to discuss with you tonight the importance of a program Mr. Jamison introduced in November, the Tides Preparatory Academy. As a person who chooses to live in long-term recovery, meaning that I have not used substances in over five years, I know firsthand the importance of early interventions like this recovery high school being proposed. I'm confident that if a program like this were around when I was in high school, I would have had the opportunity to learn alternatives to the substance use I grew up around and committed to healthy ways to address the circumstances that eventually led to my own substance use. A school like the Tides Preparatory Academy provides hope not just for the young person struggling, but their family and community also. The National Institute on Drug Abuse, found in 2021, 32% of high school seniors used illicit substances, 19% of sophomores. That means three out of every 10 seniors and two out of every 10 sophomores have reported using substances. Let that number sink in. This is in mainstream public high schools. If a school like the Tides Preparatory Academy had been available to provide me with a healthy high school environment where I could successfully maintain my sobriety, my story, like so many others, could be entirely different. As a registered and certified peer recovery specialist, I am proud to now get the opportunity to support, encourage, and advocate for others on their journey to recovery. And I am committed to assisting individuals in transforming their lives to what they are meant to be.
Our next speaker is Solo Ortiz, Erin Bennett, and then Christopher Wood.
Good evening, board. It's been a long night, so I appreciate your time tonight. My name is Solo Ortiz, and I'm a licensed clinical social worker who specializes in addiction and recovery and works with teens and adults. I have a middle school and a high school-aged child in our public school system and run two businesses here out of our city. I've treated adolescents who work with addiction and have dealt with addiction for over 15 years, from the classroom to the jail cell, telling me they needed help the entire time. I watched my daughters wrestle with the ease of access they both have to substances in school and listen as they try and help their friends find unavailable help for their dirty little secret. We expect our children to experiment and learn from their mistakes. But this issue of substance use in middle and high school is not about learning from your mistakes, it's about dying from them. I've provided recovery-based services for teens and adults. I have myself struggled to keep kids home and successful due to the lack of support they have in this very city that I live in. I also have watched mothers mourn the loss of their children to an issue that could have been treated if they had access to support in the city they live in, and they need that. Tides Preparatory Academy that was introduced a few months ago has the opportunity to change that. It gives young people willing to work on something so isolating a sense of normalcy, and it gives parents a sense of hope and support as they try and navigate the destructive world of addiction. A school like this that would provide a family guidance and treatment as their adolescent worked in honest recovery program and achieved academic excellence would only serve to benefit the community as a whole. The 2019 Journal of Mental Health Policy and Economics found that recovery high school students reported reduced substance use, increased high school graduation rates, and reduced ER use compared to similar students who did not attend a recovery high school. These facts benefit the city as a whole, not just one addict. It shows a community willing to support each of its members, not stigmatize them more by sending them out of our own borders in our city to get the help they need. It tells the families of the city that we recognize the challenges and are willing to be a part of the solution. Yes, recovery high schools involve greater per-student use of resources due to smaller class sizes and provision of therapeutic services, but the community benefits are spread over the lifespan of students and their families. Be the school board that is willing to work with its own parents, families, and local mental health and substance use treatment businesses to provide true transformation for the lives these young addicts are seeking. Thanks for your time.
Thirty seconds. Our next speaker is Erin Bennett, then Christopher Wood, then Beth Labarre.
Hello, my name is Erin. I am 26 years old and a former Calum High School student here in Virginia Beach. I am proud to be a recovering addict with two years clean from alcohol and substances. I am very grateful to speak to you regarding the Tides Preparatory Academy. Early in high school, I started using drugs and alcohol as a means of coping with issues going on in my life that I didn't know how to handle. Growing up was rough for me. I was a military brat, almost always ensuring I was the new kid at every school I went to, so I didn't have very many friends. The so-called friends that I did have weren't the best of influences, so I started using drugs and alcohol as a means of escape. During my time in high school, there was no opportunity to receive real recovery treatment within the local community as a teen, and there still isn't. Little did I know, this set me up for a turbulent early adulthood full of addiction and pain. The Tides Preparatory Academy could be the intervention that so many teens so desperately need in our community. Going to numerous facilities while in my early 20s felt a bit like continuously picking up pieces of an already shattered mirror a bit too late. While getting clean, I was lucky enough to attend different rehab and detox centers around Virginia. With one failed attempt to get sober after another, it honestly got a lot harder to believe that yet another program would actually work. If only a program like the Tides Preparatory Academy had been available to me before I made irreversible damage to my health, my family, and my life. Two years ago, I made the best decision of my life to quit drinking, and I know I'm alive today because of that, but this decision could have been made earlier in my life. With the right resources, our community could provide a real and lasting service to today's youth. We could set the younger generation up for a successful and promising future by addressing addiction issues early before sending young adults into the world with no tools to cope with the challenges that everyday life brings. Thank you for your time and consideration regarding this matter, and I hope you will wholeheartedly support the Tides Preparatory Academy and all its benefits. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christopher Wood, Beth Labarre, and then Donald Labarre.
Hi, my name is Chris, and I'm an FC graduate. I came to speak against the model policies proposed. Growing up in a homophobic and transphobic family, I've seen the hate that's shown, and I've seen the hate that's hidden. When my cousin Taylor, oh, when my cousin Taylor came out to his family at 14, his father disowned him. My immediate family did embrace him, and because of that, I have many great memories with him. However, we shared our last at the ICU at UNC Medical, April 21st, 2021. April 22nd, he was pronounced dead at 32. This last year, I lost a friend at 28 because he was outed against his will to his family. Two funerals I've been to in the past two years, two young amazing people lost because they were not accepted by their own parents. I'm here today because trans existence is reality, and enforced dead naming and forced outing might be the worst, most dangerous step in the wrong direction. Many trans, uh, sorry. Many transgender children experience familial rejection, bullying, harassment, or feel unsafe simply because of who they are, all of which are risk factors for suicide. Last year in Virginia, 53% of transgender and non-binary youth seriously considered suicide, with 17% attempting. The idea of policing a social construct like gender in schools should be absolutely rejected, and cultivating an accepting environment should be the priority. Research consistently shows that trans youth who live in communities that are accepting with high social support from families and friends significantly lower rates of attempting suicide. However, less than 50% of transgender youth find Virginia schools to be accepting, and less than 40% have an accepting home. It's clear that what is being proposed is a problem to the solution. Bullying written into law, and the lives of these children are too valuable, and that requires a rejection of these policies, these model policies proposed. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Beth Labarre, then Donald Labarre.
Good evening. I'm Beth Labarre. I have three daughters who are being educated in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. I'm also a school social worker employed by Virginia Beach Schools. I wanted to talk to you today about some aspects of the 2022 model policies that do not support our core values of putting students first, being open to change, and valuing differences. I say parts because you can decide to accept some parts of the 2022 model policies and reject others. As a community, we can respect parental rights while still supporting the well-being of all students, including transgender and non-binary students. As a mother and a school social worker, I do a lot of listening. What I have heard over the last several months is that the aspects of the model policies that are most detrimental are the ones pertaining to transgender students. I hear the students telling us that it's important to them that they be referred to by their preferred names and pronouns, and that they retain access to counseling services at school. Using preferred names is easy. We already do this for cisgender students without the need for parental consent. Not doing the same for transgender students would be discrimination. As far as trans youth retaining access to counselors, this seems like a no-brainer as well. Schools can obtain medical help for students in emergency situations before attempts to reach a parent are successful. The school nurse attends to a student's basic physical needs when they are not feeling well at school, before parents are even aware that the child is ill or injured. These most basic first aid actions are taken to secure the physical well-being of the student. It should be no different when dealing with their psychological well-being. Counseling within the educational setting is not intense psychotherapy, nor is it cognitive behavioral therapy. It is listening to what's on a student's mind, offering resources, and showing them compassion and acceptance. This is basic first aid for mental health, and it should be available to all students. Most of these young people that have come to speak
Thirty seconds.
today are seniors. Their time with us is fleeting. Then their chapters move on. The good news is, is all that time spent on their social, emotional learning has paid off. These students show a deep understanding of their own as well as other people's feelings. They want to leave a legacy of acceptance and equality to protect the emotional well-being of students that come behind them. This board can choose to help them attain that goal.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Donald Labarre.
Good evening. I'm Don Labarre. I'm a Virginia Beach resident, and all my children have been educated by Virginia Beach City Public School System. I'm here to support all of the students that you just heard from, as well as students that can't be here or are afraid to speak up. I'm also here to tell you where the patient, the parents' rights supporters that have spoken in the past have it dead wrong. Some of these people say that every parent should be aware of everything that happens between their child and the teacher in the school division. However, a good parent that's involved with their child's life wouldn't need a governmental third party to tell them about their own child. The school system isn't able to tell me anything important about my daughters that I don't already know. Why? Because I'm an involved parent, like all parents should be. I believe that every student wants a good relationship with their parents and wants to be involved in their lives. I also believe that when a student chooses not to come out, oftentimes, there is a reason. Oftentimes, that reason is the child knows they would be putting themselves in harm's way. Many transgender and non-binary students know that telling their parents everything about them would be risking everything. The 2022 Model Guidelines ignore that students would be harmed by these policies, mandating that either the student or the school outs the child, which with the wrong parent can result in emotional as well as physical abuse of the child. As a parent, I'm not saying I don't want the school division to keep me in the loop about my daughter's progress. I'm not saying that I want the government to take my job as their parent. I am saying that there has to be a balance between parents' rights and the rights of students to feel safe in the school building. And allowing this policy to take effect would endanger the lives of so many children within our schools here in Virginia Beach. The board's job is to protect the students and provide a cultivating environment for their children to grow. I'm asking the board to do its job and reject these model policies in this division. Thank you.
We're now going to move on to our online speaker, Annie Palumbo. Please unmute.
Happy New Year, everybody. Boy, do we ever live in an upside-down world. I mean, I'm listening to all these people talk about transgender students, and look, God loves them just as much, but, you know, society and the Virginia school system has done an amazing job, amazing, at brainwashing these children to not know whether they are a girl or a boy. Well, I sure am glad I'm on the outside here fighting as an activist for this, because you know what? This is wrong, and you guys all know it's wrong. God created man and woman. Anyway, I'm not really here to talk about that. I was actually getting on today to congratulate the new school board members. And, you know, it's funny, I've got to do it over Zoom for those of you who don't know what happened. See, I'm the parent who enlarged the pornography that's in our schools, and I put it on a poster board. And because I raised my voice, as every parent should be upset about pornography being in our school libraries, I got removed for a year. And all of you in the audience are probably snickering, especially Donald Robertson, and especially Jack Freeman and Kim Melnick. You all want me out because you don't like truth. But guess what, guys? I have two more months, and I'm coming back in there. You violated my First Amendment rights, and I am still looking for an attorney. So don't worry, you're not finished with me yet. But anyway, you know, we really do have a uniparty here. We have the Democrats and the Republicans is the uniparty, and we, the people. I am shocked tonight that two out of three Students First Virginia candidates who ran on conservative values. Yes, David Culpepper, you. Yes, Carolyn Weems, you. You ran on conservative values. You took money from people who donated, my family, one of them, quite a bit of money to your campaign. And Jennifer Franklin, you as well. You ran as conservative. You voted for the Democrat who laughed at parents as they spoke to children, about children, for children. You laughed at us, especially me. You mocked us. You voted to put masks on our kids, Trenace Rigs. You voted for critical race theory in schools. You even voted to have the pornography in our libraries. I don't know why a human being would do that. But the conservative people, guys, ladies and gentlemen, three of them, David Culpepper, Carolyn Weems, and Jennifer Franklin, just voted to put a Democrat in charge of the chairwoman.
Thirty seconds.
Yep. Unbelievable. Thank you so much, Kathleen Brown, Mike Callen, and Vicky Manning for abstaining from voting. I tell you what, I am shocked, as well as so many of us who supported you guys. I'm so glad I'm an activist out here, because I'm going to put you guys under a microscope, and so are a bunch of us. Y'all, this is unbelievable. And you know what, Carolyn Weems? You think that Trenace Rigs is going to be all friendly? Don't you know these people lie? Don't you know they don't care? It's all about capitalism.
And that is time. Madam Chair, that was our last speaker for the evening.
Thank you. So our next agenda item is the consent agenda. And we, remember, we moved A, positive behavioral intervention and supports your tier-one evaluation down to action as C. So we will start with B, which will become A, Lanstown Middle School Dominion Energy Easement Agreement. And then C, which is now B, Energy Performance Contract. D, which is now C, Recommendations of General Contractor. One, Kimsville and Ocean Lakes High Schools turf/track field improvements. Two, Hermitage and Newtown Elementary Schools boiler replacement. Three, Kingston Elementary School HVAC replacement. Are there any objections to the school board voting on the consent agenda items? If so, please identify any item that should be moved to the action agenda now. Okay? Hearing no call to move an item from the consent agenda, I call for a motion to approve all of the items on the consent agenda as presented. So moved by Kim Melnick, seconded by Kathleen Brown. All in favor, raise your hand, please.
We have 10 ayes.
Do I call all against? Or abstain? No.
Mr. Callen, how do you vote?
Okay, thank you.
No.
Okay, so the motion passed with 10 ayes.
Thank you. Now for the action agenda, the Personnel Report Administrative Appointments. Okay, I call for, the move, the motion was made by Kim Melnick and seconded by Jessica Owens, sorry. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, I call for a vote to approve the Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. All in favor, please raise your hands.
We have 10 ayes.
All against, please raise your hands. Or abstain?
So we have 10.
You need to tell us why you abstain, Mr. Culpepper.
Oh, I'm not familiar with any of these people, so I'm abstaining for now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Madam Chair, we have, the motion did pass with 10 ayes.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Spence, do you have any administrative appointments?
I do, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd first like to ask Kelly Padilla to please stand up, Padilla to please stand up. You all will recognize Kelly. She has been in Virginia Beach for quite some time. She served as a teacher at Luxford Elementary School at Betty F. Williams. She's been a reading specialist at Shelton Park, as well as Betty F. Williams, and Linkhorn Park Elementary School. She was an instructional specialist in the Department of Teaching and Learning, as well as a coordinator for Language Arts in that same department. She served recently as an assistant principal at Allentown Elementary School, most recently as assistant principal at Green Run Elementary School. And we're pleased this evening that the board has accepted our recommendation for Ms. Padilla to serve as the next principal of W.T. Cook Elementary School. Congratulations. Cheerleaders in the back, by the way, I just want to point that out. And I think you also have some guests with you. Thank you so much for being here this evening. I could ask Ronald Burgabow to please stand up. Mr. Burgabow has served as a financial planner for the city of Portsmouth. He's been a budget specialist here in the city of Virginia Beach, as well as an economist and forecaster for the city of Virginia Beach, most recently has served on the executive management team here in the city of Virginia Beach. We're pleased this evening that the board has accepted our recommendation for him to serve as the next demographer and GIS manager in the Office of Facility Services. Congratulations, sir. Also like to ask Zachary Buckholz to please stand up. Mr. Buckholz has also served for quite some time here in Virginia Beach, teacher at Green Run High School, and administrative assistant at Kimsville Middle School. He's been an assistant principal at Princess Anne Middle School, most recently has been serving as an assistant principal at Brandon Middle School. We're pleased this evening that the board has accepted our recommendation for him to serve as the next Human Resources Specialist in the Department of Human Resources. Congratulations to you. I think you do have a guest with you as well.
I do, my wife, Pete.
Great, thank you for being here. And then finally, I'd like to ask Karen Woodson to stand up. I'll note, as she does, that the board actually took a vote to appoint Ms. Woodson to the position we're speaking about tonight at the 12:13-22 school board meeting, but we're having the opportunity to recognize you tonight, and we're pleased to do so. Ms. Woodson has served as an accountant in the Department of Finance in the city of Portsmouth, a capital projects accountant in the Department of Public Utilities in the city of Chesapeake, has been serving as an internal auditor here in Virginia Beach in the Office of Internal Audit, most recently has been the interim director of internal audit here in the Office of Internal Audit in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And we're pleased this evening again to announce that she is the new school board internal auditor in the Office of Internal Audit. Congratulations to you. And would you like to introduce your guests for us? Thank you all very much for being here. And again, just a reminder to all of our new administrators, and particularly their families, we thank you so much, and the reason we invite you is because they spend so much of their time with us, and we want to acknowledge and tell you how much we appreciate your support for their work.
Okay, so we're going to move on to action. The action agenda B, Resolution Regarding the City Council Ordinance to Amend Section 15-5.2 of the City Code pertaining to the business license fees and taxes. I call for a motion to approve the resolution regarding the City Council Ordinance to amend Section 15-5.2 of the City Code pertaining to the business license fees and taxes. Moved by Ms. Manning. Do I have a second? Second by Kathleen Brown. All in favor, please raise your hand. Oh, sorry, is there a discussion? Sorry. Would anyone like to say something? Okay, Ms. Anderson.
So, in the past three years, this is the third time that City Council has taken it upon themselves to cut something from our agreement that we have for our funding. And even though this was not a huge significant amount, I mean, it is $595,000, half a million dollars, it is a lot of money, and it takes a little bit more from the agreement that we have with the city. We have an agreement where we get a certain percentage of different items from the city budget. And I just want the public to understand that the city keeps taking a little bit, a little bit, a little bit, every single year. Every time we turn around, they're cutting a little bit more from that agreement. They don't have to ask us, they just do it. And then we have to vote on sending them a resolution accepting what they've already done. So I'm going to vote against this just because of the fact that, you know, when you have an agreement with somebody and you've written this agreement out, I think that there should have been some discussion with the board, with this board, before they decided to do that. And even though it may not seem like a significant amount of money when it comes to our overall budget and what we receive from the city, it's still, you know, three years ago, they took money, the TIF money from Sandbridge. They eliminated part of that money. And like I said, every single time I turn around, they're taking a little bit more. So the agreement that we have, it's a signed agreement, and you can look it up, states that we get a certain percentage, and I just disagree with the fact that they can just, they can just decide, okay, we're going to just eliminate $595,000, you guys just live with it. Now send us a resolution stating that you agree with this. So I'm going to vote against it, and that's the reason why, because I just think that we needed to at least have some discussion about it before they just unilaterally decide to take money away from a written agreement that we have, giving us, you know, a certain amount of money each, from each of these little pieces of the budget. So that's why.
Ms. Franklin.
City Council reduced their intake of taxes.
Excuse me, first Ms. Franklin, and then Ms. Franklin.
Oh, I thought you called.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. While, as a small business owner, I certainly appreciate the lower fee, I have to say that I am disappointed that it is creating this impact to our budget. And, you know, the $20 I save, you know, I feel a little bit conflicted, which I'm even considering abstaining from this vote altogether, but, Crystal, I have a question for you, because, you know, this was a decision by City Council to lower the fees, which, again, I'm sure some small business owners appreciated very much, but is there any way that we have the ability to speak as the division in regards to how this will impact our portion of what we can expect from future budgets?
Are you asking, like, to speak publicly when they do?
Well, are we consulted? I'm just curious.
We were not. I mean, we've had, when we've had some set-asides taken off the top of four, we weren't consulted as well, even though the agreement does mention that they would consult with us to do that. So it was a decision, and I was at the City Council meeting, it was just a decision that was brought by the Commissioner of the Revenue. It was brought in December. It's in a calendar year tax, so it was effective January 1. And so it was decided, and I got a call a couple of days later from the Director of Budget in the city that let us know that that was approved, and that this is the impact that it would have on us for this fiscal year. For next fiscal year, right now, they're not estimating any type of reduction at this point, because there is thought that there's other revenues that may overperform and offset any reduction we may see, but they don't have any good estimates at this point right now.
I think we really do need to take a close look at this every year, because this is, I agree to some respect that, you know, it does feel like there are just small, little changes, and we have big decisions to make, you know, in regards to how we are going to fill in some vacancies and do some things, and it concerns me a little bit, but, yeah, I appreciate your input there. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Brown. You okay? Okay, Mrs. Manning.
Yeah, thank you. I did want to also point out that it was Mr. Phil Calum, Commissioner of the Revenue, who requested that City Council do this. He'd been trying for a couple of years to get them to lower these rates. So I do think that this is going to help our citizens, our business owners, who do contribute so much to our schools through a lot that they give back. And I also want to just point out that when we get unexpected additional revenues, we also get those, and we have the benefit of that. And we have a record budgeted amount this year, I believe $1.1 billion. We're spending, you know, well over $1,000 per student more than we have in previous years. So I just want to point out, I don't want this to look like, oh, you know, City Council's taking money from us. They're not. They're not using this money. This money is benefiting the people who pay, who pay out of their own pockets, our businesses, and hopefully this will help our businesses.
Thank you. Ms. Pate, would you please read the resolution for us? Do you have it?
I do, hold on.
Sorry, I should have read it before we voted on it, but let's read it.
I think I do.
Unless you want me to.
I don't know that I have it in front of me. I have the ordinance. I don't have it with me.
We'll read it. Mrs. Weems, how about you read it for us?
Whereas the City Council approved an ordinance on December 6, 2022, titled "An Ordinance to Amend Section 18-5.2 of the City Code pertaining to business license fees and taxes, and to provide revenue offsets. And whereas the ordinance directs the school board to provide the offset required by the city school's revenue sharing policy in the amount of $495,453. And whereas the school board could not take action regarding this ordinance until the school board meeting scheduled for January 10, 2023. And whereas a memo sent to Kevin Chantelier, Director of Budget and Management Services, on January 3, 2023, advised that the offsets to cover the $495,453 reduction of the local revenues to Virginia Beach City Public Schools during this fiscal year will be offset in the budget through teacher vacancies. And now therefore be it resolved that the school board has provided the specific budget shortfall offset information in this resolution. And finally, resolve that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of the school board, and the clerk of the school board is directed to deliver a copy of this resolution to the mayor, each member of City Council, the city manager, and the city clerk."
Okay. So thank you for reading that. We already had our discussion. Anything else? Anybody else?
You didn't call on me.
I didn't call on you?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm going to call on Mrs. Melnick. I didn't see your hand.
As a business owner in the city of Virginia Beach, we talk so often about educating our children, but we also ask people to move to our children, but we also ask people to move to Virginia Beach, to open businesses here. And I think this is a small, a small nod to business owners. And it is a relatively small amount of money, but it certainly makes a difference. And it is a nod, it's a nice nod from, I promise, the Commissioner of the Revenue made to the citizens of Virginia Beach. And it's one that I'll support, and I ask my colleagues to do the same.
Thank you, Mrs. Melnick. I'm sorry, we did not see your hand. Mrs. Owens.
Just wanted to, to comment. I'm obviously in agreement for what we can do as a, a city for our business owners. I think the point that Ms. Anderson made that I agree with is that a little better communication between these decisions happening and the board on our side having to make these adjustments would be appreciated. You know, making the change in December to go in effect in January that impacts our budget decisions kind of immediately. And, and we support that, the majority of us here on the board. But being able to be aware and just having that little bit of communication would go a long way. And hopefully, we can be facilitating that with our, our colleagues in the city. And their new council.
Martin.
Thank you. As someone who works in economic policy, the return on investment of our entrepreneurial ecosystem is critically important. We have an entrepreneurial academy in our city, and those students do open businesses as part of their educational matrix. So, I think it's really important that we understand that this is a return on investment. It may not pay off in the next six months, but it certainly will in the next 18 to 24 months. So, thank you.
Okay. Are we all good? Okay. I need a motion to, okay. Moved by Mrs. Melnick and seconded by Mrs. Martin.
Madam Chair, we already have a motion.
Oh, that, okay. That was, it was the motion, wasn't it? Okay. And do we have the second, so our second? Okay. So, let, all who are in favor, let's raise our hands.
We have nine ayes.
All that are against, please raise your hands.
We have one nay.
And abstention?
And reason for abstention?
Can you tell us? We can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Apologize. Because this impacts me as a small business owner.
So, Madam Chair, the motion did pass with nine ayes, one nay, and one abstention.
Thank you. Okay, we are on, now on C. That was moved from consent to action. And that is positive behavioral interventions and supports PBIS Year Two Tier One Evaluation. Mrs. Manning asked for that to be moved. Okay?
So, we're going to need a motion and a second?
Yes, we need a motion and a second. Okay. Jennifer Franklin made the motion to approve. And Mrs. Melnick seconded. All in favor, please raise your hand. Oh, sorry. Any discussion? Sorry. Ms. Manning, did you? You don't want to discuss? You don't have anything to say? Okay. Anybody else? Oh, Ms. Manning.
So, back in 2019, when the board was asked to fully implement this program across the division, I asked a question. And I said, I asked if there was data to support that this program was improving student discipline. And I was told there was no data. And in 2020, just before the school shut down, we had an ad hoc discipline committee that did do some surveys. That's not technically data, but it was some surveys of our teachers that gave us some indication of how they were feeling about PBIS. And one of the questions, and the board has received this document in the past, it stated, "How effective do you think PBIS is improving student behavior in your school?" And there were three options, very effective, somewhat effective, and not effective. Forty-four percent of our teachers said that it was not effective. Forty-six percent said somewhat effective, and only 10% said very effective. I, I, I won't continue to harp on this. I'll just state this, you know, I just wanted to back up with some information of why I don't support this moving forward, because I just don't think that it's beneficial to our division. And I think continuing to push forward with it isn't helping our children. Thank you.
Ms. Melnick.
As a board member who spends many days a week in, in our schools, specifically going on elementary school, I can speak to its efficacy. And I see it in action, but I also have a clear understanding that PBIS takes time. And it's, it is relatively new, and I believe it is working and for that. And because I see it every day, I will be voting in favor.
Ms. Martin.
You know, as someone who has a child in one of our city public schools, I see PBIS as a return on investment. My, my student, oh, sorry. Yeah, it's on. Sorry. So, I have a student in our school system, and I see PBIS as a return on investment that got interrupted by the pandemic, just like the entrepreneurial ecosystem is a return on investment. We will see the return on investment in this positive behavior intervention in the long term. My child comes home with his Larkspur dollars, very excited for being rewarded for positive behavior. That is trickling down to his classmates and his peers. I do know that there are several discipline-related education bills filed in the General Assembly. Until we know what the disposition of those are, I think we stick with what we have started and what we know. And then we revisit this after we see what happens during session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Franklin.
And, you know, going through the surveys and, and understanding that, again, this is something that we have implemented, and it does take a little bit of time. For, for this year, I happen to have a larger majority of, of elementary schools that I am a school sponsor for. And I, when I go into the elementary schools, I really see this being implemented, working, and that the staff is excited about it. And we might not understand the total result or the, the overall result from it until a few years later, but I feel like stopping it in its path right now might be detrimental in the fact that we, we, we have this program that we've invested in, and we haven't given it time to evolve and, and show its true value. So, so I just want to say, based on the elementary schools that I've visited, what they've implemented, and what I've, what I've really been excited to, to see happening in the elementary schools. And yes, it might, it might take longer to be useful and, and work its way up to the, the secondary levels, but I think that we should be hopeful that the money that we've invested is, is making impact and will, and will give us the results that we're hoping for.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Owens.
I wasn't going to, but I, I just want to acknowledge that while the results that we're seeing may not be as exciting and far ahead as some of us may have liked to see with the PBIS program, I think it's important for us to look at the totality of the picture that has happened in our districts and in the, the nation since we chose to implement this program. Not only had, had a pandemic and all of the things that happened with that, both in the schools and in families' lives, we just had a presentation about our staffing numbers, about what our turnover looks like, about vacancies that are continuously in our buildings. And this is a program that is going to be most effective when it can be consistent, when it is, you know, practiced consistently, both in time and with staff members. And when we have the, the turnover that we have, the vacancies that we have, the absences that we have dealt with over the past two or three years, we're going to expect to see some bumps in the road. And so, at this point, we may not have results that we are ecstatic about, but we, I think we are seeing progress. And at this point, we don't have a, another alternative on the table. What was going on prior to it obviously wasn't wonderful either, or else we wouldn't have changed it. And so, at this point, I, I'm going to obviously vote for it and keeping in mind that we do want to continue to monitor for progress and adjust as, as needed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Did we, do, do any of you guys want to say anything? Okay. You're standing there. I did, I just wanted to give you the opportunity. Thank you for being here. Okay, so, I have, we had a motion and a second. Now I need to see all in favor. Your hands, please, for this vote.
We have six ayes.
All against?
And we have four nays.
We have five. All against, please raise your hand again, please.
So, we have five nays. The motion did pass. Six ayes, five nays. The motion did pass.
Thank you. Okay, our next item on the agenda is committee organization or board reports. Are there any items to share tonight? Ms. Franklin? And then Ms. Owens.
Yes, we actually had the Gifted CAC meeting last night. And so, they had done a presentation for us and essentially just wanted to let you know that some of the changes that they discussed had been implemented. They are now doing the COGAT and the NAGLIER testing on all first graders. And basically, that's to create a local norm so that we're not just using national numbers, we're actually getting a better perspective on the local level. And so, that has been implemented, and I'm expecting that they will give us a report here shortly. But, so what I'm really excited about, though, on top of that, and I'm sorry, wasn't expect to be first on to talk, but it was the distance learning. And for those new school board members, the, what, the opportunities that we are providing through the distance learning is just mind-blowing. Trey Malis, Malis, Malis did a great presentation yesterday. And, you know, there's just so many things that we're doing right now, just in terms of providing opportunities to not only make up work, but also get ahead through asynchronous classes, through distance learning, through all of these different opportunities that they're, they're providing virtually, is just amazing. So, I, I hope that they do a full presentation to the board, which I fully expect that they will, but it's pretty exciting, the opportunities that we are making available to our students, what they're doing, and the Gifted CAC community, you know, I, I've thoroughly enjoyed it. If anybody wants to join in, it is quite eye-opening about all the different amazing things we're doing through their committee. So, just wanted to report that, and I'm excited about it.
Thank you. Ms. Owens.
Just wanted to briefly mention that I attended the Mental Health Task Force meeting yesterday, the 9th. And they continue to, to work on a lot of different initiatives and different ideas as a collaboration between community partners, staff members, and even student representatives. One of the things that came out of the meeting yesterday that I'm extremely excited about is that we, in February, will be starting Securely After Hours program, which, if you're not already aware, that we have the Securely System, which monitors our students' activity on their Chromebook, and if there are certain words or searches that come up that are concerning further health or safety or whatever, a team can contact parents and check in or contact the student and check on them based on what was on the Chromebook. After Hours, when we had students who were looking things up or making statements regarding self-harm, previously, our Safe Schools team was attempting and making contact with families and, and trying to go from there. Starting, I believe, February 6th, we will be contracted working with CHKD. And so, we will have mental health professionals being able to contact families after hours when there are concerns about self-harm, suicidality, or, or any of those issues. And so, something that I had been concerned about, I'm, I'm very excited that that's where we're moving. I'm sure that the committee will be presenting whenever next in rotation to talk about some of the things that they've done further than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I just want to mention, since we're talking about committees and giving reports on, the board reports. Mrs., I've asked Mrs. Tony Otto to, she's going to be sending out tomorrow to everyone the vacancies on different committees due to new board member, board members leaving and new board members coming on, that, you know, you'll need to fill in for us. Please let me know. Get back with me. I've had a couple people have already told the powers that be, you know, what works for them with like discipline. But get back with me as soon as possible, tomorrow, the next day. Check out your calendars. Let me know what vacancies, what committees you would be interested in. We will also put, there's some that meet, like PRC, Policy Review Committee, meets on Thursdays once a month. Okay? And they meet in the morning. So, we will, you know, we will put that information out if there's a regular day of the week that they meet in a time. And give us your information if you're interested in that committee. And even let us know, you know, I'd love to do this, but I just, I can't do it at that time of the day. Is there a possibility to move it a little? You know, that kind of thing. Just give me that information, and we'll work with it the best we can. Okay? And if you want to call me, you've got my number, please call me and talk to me about whatever. All right? Any questions? And this is for the new members. Just, everybody else, we're going to stay where we are. There's a couple, like Mrs. Melnick will go on to a, a discipline committee and maybe a couple other committees, because she was the vice chair. So, she only, she didn't have a discipline committee at the time. So, just let me know, please. Yes, Ms. Manning?
So, are you saying that only new members are going to be chosen for empty committee assignments?
Yes, right now. I mean, unless there's some that...
That's not what our bylaws say.
Well, unless some that want to go change to something else.
I would.
Okay. So, let me know.
Okay.
Okay? Yeah, Mr. Callen.
Where would one go in order to get an overview of A, all of the committees, and explanations surrounding what each committee represents?
It's on our...
It's in the bylaws.
It's on our bylaws. Regina, can you provide that when you provide?
Bylaw 128.
Yeah, she'll, and she'll provide that when she provides the vacancies, so you can see it, you don't have to look it up and try to find out where it is. Okay?
Thank you.
So, yes, Ms. Williams.
Yeah, I just want to iterate, just make it real easy, actually, not just give them the link, but give them the, the list, the list.
Yeah, the actual list and the actual what, what those committees do. Please.
Would you most like me to provide the actual bylaw?
You can, you can put the bylaw. Mm-hmm.
And then also, I want to just say, I totally agree that anybody can, can, can speak now to fill these committees, and then we'll do it again. Obviously, we're on a year rotation in July.
Yes, the 1st of June.
But this is just to go from here to there, except for any, any school board member can request to be on a committee. And we've got a couple, like one new one that I've suggested. And then, so just make your, make your wishes known.
Yeah, also, Ms. Tony Otto, include that one that we were talking, that Mrs. Williams talked about today. The career development one. Okay? We'll need two for that. Yes, Ms.?
Well, and I just want to point out that our bylaws state the, how committee assignments are supposed to be chosen. It's supposed to be by interest, by availability, by experience, and, and many different things. So, I hope that the chair and vice chair will consider that when you are, and, and that you're asking the board members, not just, do you want to be on a committee, but, you know, based upon those bylaws, why do you want to be on those committees?
Right. I mean, I wouldn't think you'd put your name out there unless you knew something about it, and like Mr. Callen wanted to know what they, what these committees were about, obviously, before you step in and put your name in there. about, obviously, before you step in and put your name in there. I don't blame you. Yes, I agree with that. Thank you, Ms. Manning. Any other questions, concerns? Okay, then we are adjourned.